Hey Mike, how's the baby?
Yeah.
Good baby? Oh, Mike's virtual.
Mike's in there.
How's your baby doing, Mike?
Really, really.
Really good, happy little guy.
Just want to find the rec. Want to do it?
Nope. I don't know how much time is left. I'm not delivering a marathon.
Yeah, that's true.
There are more.
It's a parade.
It was worth it.
It was excellent. The weather was awesome.
Because they work, like, do they have to go through each one of them and debate them?
Lots of people.
Oh, you got the baby. Ah, there's the baby.
Oh. Oh, that is cute, too. I'm like, I thought that was the actual baby there.
Good thing he's not here.
Yeah.
Baby's just totally upset when they see me.
Either eating, sleeping, or getting his diaper changed.
Sounds like you.
I just got a call, Dawn, because she didn't put the rec proclamation in my calendar.
You want me to run over there?
She probably got sitting on her desk. Thanks, Carrie.
See how fast he can move.
They're running.
He's really moving well. Very nimble for a big guy. Yeah, that's what they used to say about me. You laugh, I would say, when I was playing Little League ball.
Oh.
My coach used to say, "I cover more ground just standing still than anyone," you know, is it? I was, you know, I was an adult before I realized that wasn't a compliment, right? There, nicely filled in the calf.
That was fast. We were all watching.
That's impressive.
All right, can we start, guys? Everybody ready? Live? Okay. Morning, everyone. I will call this meeting to order, community of the whole, otherwise known as COW, for May 30, 2022. Tenets at the beginning of the meeting is 100% with Council Jolly, Kilik, Hughes, and Broadhead, Virtual, and the rest of us here in person. First thing on the agenda is always fun. We're doing a proclamation. Why don't you guys come forward? Same way back there. Roaming rec crew. So I don't know how many years we've been doing this now. Two or three, for sure.
I would say close to seven, eight.
Awesome, okay, good. So we're reading the proclamation for Recs and Park Month, which is going to be, obviously, the month of June. Good month to do it because kids are still around, because they're still in school, not on their holidays, so it's a good time to actually expose what our rec department has to offer for our community. I will read the proclamation and obviously send a thank you to you guys for what you do in the community. And then Danielle, I don't know if you want to say anything, introduce who you've got with you and talk about what's going on this summer? Can I do that? Okay. Okay. Whereas, "The City of St. Albert provides an opportunity, or many opportunities, for individuals and families to lead an active and healthy lifestyle year-round, such as playing our parks, walking or biking along our beautiful trails, and joining in many fitness and recreation opportunities our community offers. Whereas, recreation promotes mental, physical, and social health benefits for people of all ages. And whereas participating in recreational activities cultivates social interaction, social inclusion, cultural diversity, and family unity to build strong, connected community. And whereas we invite residents and visitors to celebrate the summer by participating in a wide variety of recreational activities and to enjoy the outdoor parks and trails throughout St. Albert. Now therefore, on behalf of Council, I, Kathy Hearn, Mayor of the City of St. Albert, in recognition of the benefits and values of recreation and parks, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2022 as Recreation and Parks Month in St. Albert." So.
Yeah, so really, I think for us, it's about promoting three items really with Rec and Parks Month. It's the philosophy of healthy, active living and the importance of that to our community. Because I think we've really seen evidence through COVID, the importance that our values in recreation and parks and having that healthy, active lifestyle. It's really about the spaces and places we have for people to play and recreate. So for us, it's about all amenities, the facilities, the wonderful parks and trails that we have that we can promote for our community, as well as about the people. So a really big shout out to our staff from Recreation and Parks and Public Operations who manage all of our recreation facilities and amenities and the work they've done over the last few years to maintain that safety and that service delivery to our community, which has been so important. So for us, it's really key. And today I have with me Amy and Haley, who are members of our summer program staff, and they are going to build programs and activities for our community for kids and families to participate in throughout the summer. programs and activities for our community for kids and families to participate in throughout the summer. So really to those smiling faces in our parks, trails, and facilities. And so they're going to do all that great work this summer. So we're really looking forward to that. And we actually have a video if we can share.
Yeah.
That Sean's going to run for us, all about Recreation and Parks Month and all the things that you can expect in St. Albert. Go ahead, Sean. Thanks.
Great.
So thanks for that, Sean. So really, it's just a reminder that you can participate in June as Rec and Parks Month by tagging a photo on our Twitter page or on our social media handle. Also, you can register your participation minutes. And last year, we registered almost a half a million minutes as St. Albert residents. So you can register your minutes on participation as well. And so lots of exciting opportunities ahead of us this summer. And I just appreciate Haley and Amy being here to do some proclamation with me.
What's the hashtag?
It's hashtag June, wait, I gotta find it. Celebrate June, J R P M. Hashtag celebrate J R P M.
Okay.
Yes. And it'll be on our website as well.
See if I can push that up.
Yeah, that's a great one. I can make sure to tag you in it.
Okay, perfect. Awesome. You know, it makes sense because how many people in our senior leadership team have a degree in arts and recreation?
Thank you.
And we'll see you guys roaming.
Yeah. As soon as they left the green, I'll summer.
Sure, so I thought they were a professional wrestling tag.
And they land out there.
Okay, we'll do that right away. All right, one of you move the agenda?
Yeah, I'll move the agenda, May 30.
All those in favor of the agenda as presented? You can just raise your hands, I think. Thanks, awesome. All right, we're going to start first with the procedure by law. And David, I'll turn it over to you. Are you going to go through each of those questions you had in the background or?
Well, thank you, Mayor Heron. We could do this any number of different ways. I just wanted to point out that what we're hoping to get, so first of all, before we say anything more, so everybody knows, we have a couple of our staff from ledge services here in the room today, but everyone's online.
Okay.
Everyone is listening attentively. Everyone's going to take copious notes. And this is important, right? Because we want to get feedback from you. And that's really what we want. We want feedback. So really, to answer your question, Mayor Heron, I'm really in your hands. If you'd like, I could go through each and every specific thing on which we were hoping to get feedback. Or you could just throw it open and have, you know, council, council members just, you know, say what's on their mind. You could do it that way. I'm open to whatever way you want to proceed.
Did you have our opening presentation before we start jumping into?
No, my, my presentation is basically the report. All I'll say is that, you know, you don't have to have a new procedure by law. But and indeed, if it turns out that consensus of council is you want to keep the existing one, also be it. But it's, when you look around, particularly, as you can see, we kind of saw Red Deer is what we consider as all of ledge services and myself is from both the legal and ledge perspective, I think it's really good. You're not going to just copy it, obviously. I mean, we're a different city. But as a template, as a model, you can see what they've tried to do. I think it reads a lot more comfortably than ours. It would be as a chair, I think it would be easier for you to use and easier for us to give advice on. So our intention, unless we hear, you know, some objections to it, our intention is to use that by law, bring it forward, probably at a meeting in September, it's probably the best time, and and propose a new, a brand new procedure by law for St. Albert that's largely based on that model. But importantly, with whatever council members feel should be unique to our city or unique to our experience.
Right.
We have, we have traditions, like everyone does, right? So we'll sing the song from Fiddler on the Roof, but you know the one.
If you were a rich man.
I think the best way is to go through the questions. I think there was eight. And then after that, if something is still burning that hasn't been adjusted through that process, we can bring it up. Natalie, I know you have been taking notes over the last probably four years on and stuff and have given your notes to David.
Yeah.
So are most of your notes adjusted in these 17 questions?
Um, for the most part, let me just, I've got like five pages of notes here.
No, it's good.
So the only things that kind of weren't addressed is in the cuff report. So a few years ago, one of the recommendations was that any items on the consent agenda should only be removed by a majority vote of council and not at the request of a counselor. So just something to consider that that was recommended to us. And another recommendation was regarding information requests. So basically that all of them are assembled by the CAO and brought back at the next meeting to either kind of approve the staff time to do them or not. So those were just, I don't have a particular opinion on those, but those were just a couple of recommendations.
Okay, so I'm gonna, so I'm gonna remember that consent agenda in IRs and we'll adjust those as 18 and 19, I guess, at the end there.
Yeah.
So start with number one. It says, are number standards headings on our current council agendas that are almost never get used? Should a more streamlined standard for the agenda be prescribed and scheduled, blah, blah? I was questioning, I'm going to get some tea, but which ones are not used?
I can get you.
I can hear you.
Okay, sorry. So there are some that are actually redundant. If you go through any typical agenda, I actually probably should have included that typical agenda. There are, there are a number of headings that are there, but there's never any items of business under them, right? I think we know which ones those are and we could, so but more, more to the point, though, what I was suggesting is do we want to actually set out a standard form of agenda, prescribe it right in the procedure by law, say, this is what every agenda will look like. It will have these headings, even if underneath that heading, there's just an A, nothing, right? Do we want to do it that way? Because we have, you know, or we, or we could have a standard form of agenda and the procedure by law could say that if for any particular meeting, one of the headings isn't used, just remove it, just take it right out, right? We've had many, many agendas where there's been a heading and nothing there.
Right. Like emergent items is one.
Emergent items, if there's no emergent items, what's it doing there?
Granicus sets out a template?
We're going to put it up right away. We're just getting it ready.
Yeah, I just, I'm just looking at.
Is that a template or just?
Yeah, that's just an older one, old one. I'm just following here, public hearing. Committee business.
Yeah, public hearings is another example. If there happens to be no public hearing, I mean, why is that even on the agenda, right? Doesn't need to be there.
Of course, I picked the last ones, which is the longest one.
So why are they on the agenda?
Tradition.
This tradition.
I would be okay with that. I just want to be sure. Is council members generally okay with agendas that are more concise? The, yeah, there we go.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, but what's the harm if they're on there and they're just a template, we're not using it and we skip over it? I mean, it just.
That's what I see, too.
Yeah, I mean, it's not. I mean, it's just this kind of standard format. I noticed when I was looking through other municipalities, some people actually specifically outline exactly what's supposed to be in the procedure on the agenda in their by law. You know, the format and all that. Yeah. And I think, I don't see a problem with it if we're not using it. I mean, it's not that I mean, you correct me if I'm wrong, ledge services, but they just, they just fill it in if there's something there. And if it's not, they leave it blank, right?
Yeah, it's.
I don't, I mean, I don't see a problem.
Okay.
I think we, my own personal opinion, we leave it on, leave it as is. And because otherwise, to add it on later at a different time, then you got to have a.
Okay, so through the notional chair.
The chair that keeps bouncing around here.
Question, I heard you say that you think that actually there would be another good enhancement that the by law in a schedule to by law could not only set out the standard form, but a little explanatory note, here's what goes under this heading.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah.
Really like that.
I've just noticed that other municipalities actually have the actual that format in there and then everybody knows what's in there.
That's what that heading is to be used for.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good. Yeah. I like having emergent items on there just in case Kerry brings something at 1:59.
It's more like you.
Actually, you guys usually are guilty than we are.
Like, we're halfway through the meeting and something emerges. I think it's nice to have there. Any, any opinions online?
I would just say, like, I don't think it needs to be in the procedure by law, but if ledge knows that we don't have anything under a particular heading, just delete it from that week's, like, it could be in the template and just delete it from the, the actual agenda. So it's still there as kind of a placeholder, but.
Well, we're not going to have a public hearing. If you have a public hearing, we're going to know that two weeks out, right? Because you haven't advertised it.
I'm just saying, I mean, part of the reason, I mean, and I realize every term we come up with our own procedure by law, but at the same point, it's in there for continuity purposes. It's in there for historical reasons. I like, I just like having it in there to say that's what it's for. So, I mean, yes, you're right. I mean, if you look at, if you look at some of the municipalities, their procedure by law is only eight pages long, you know? But then others are a little longer, but I don't see any harm having it in the by law.
I agree with Ken. And the other thing is, it's the numbering, right? So like, if we suddenly are deleting things and number seven's gone and then number nine's gone, I think it's just going to be more prone to having errors. And when you're trying to like pull something off of consent or whatever, you're trying to refer to something, it helps if, at least if there's a consistent numbering. So having it there and saying seven, and you could put a line saying, no, nothing today, like, or no business or something like this, if you wanted just to be complete so that we are very clear on it. But having that where you have the consistency of every month or every meeting, and then you have a consistency of numbers every meeting, like, it says eight committee business. And if there was nothing, then all of a sudden, eight becomes nine, and then the numbering gets all screwed up. And it just, it just, in my mind, it just works for nothing. So I think it's easier if you can just slot things into it from an administrative point of view as opposed to having to renumber every single time and for us to try to figure out the numbers are as well and where they are in there. And also, there, things do come up last minute. And so then we don't even have them on the, on the agenda. So I think that just leaving it in there allows us that flexibility. So I'm, I agree with Ken.
I'm indifferent. This is not a big deal.
We've got, I think we've got consensus.
Okay. Okay, this is, the next one's about agenda setting.
Yeah. Up in here. It's, there's two main ways agendas get set in municipalities. The one that we use is sort of a modified version of the mayor sets the agenda model, right? As in our current bylaws, we all know the mayor sets the agenda but must consult with certain people, right? The other main model that you see in many municipalities is CAO sets. So I just wanted to be sure when we're going forward, do we want to continue with the model we have now? Do we want to change it? What's the feeling?
Wes.
Yeah, I don't mind our current model, although I, I got to tell you, with the, the two chairs of the committees and the mayor setting the agenda, what you've done is de facto set up a, an executive committee of council that basically runs the show. And then if somebody else wants to actually show up at the agenda committee, now you've got quorum within the meeting. And I'm not sure that's allowed. So I'd like to understand the legislative sort of circumstance around that, because the chairs don't change. And so, so basically, you've got an executive committee of council and the other four sort of look on.
So if I may, through the chair, those are excellent questions. And there's, there's actually two questions embedded in there that are both really important. So first of all, our current procedure by law does require the mayor to consult with the chairs of the standing committees, but it's very clear that ultimately, the box stops with the mayor. The mayor decides what the agenda will be. So it is, I agree with Council Broadhead, it's kind of like an executive committee. However, the use of the word committee is very important to understand. This is not, when, when people get together, when the mayor and the two chairs get together with the CAO in attendance, and usually ledge staff is there as well. This is not called a committee, very particular not to call it a committee in the existing procedure by law. Because if it was a committee of council, it would have to happen in public, it would have to happen in the open. Now, that's not necessarily a bad thing. I do know that previously, there was some concern about setting agendas in public. But if nobody has a problem with the agendas of council being set in a very public forum where the public can actually show up and watch it happen, if nobody has a problem with that, we can call it a committee of council. Red Deer, if you've read Red Deer, Red Deer is a committee basically of one, right? Consisting of the mayor. So, so there's two really important questions in there. First of all, are we okay with the mayor being ultimately the contender? And secondly, do we want to structure it as a committee? Because right now, as we know, this happens, I don't want to say behind closed doors, I mean, we don't, you know, lock ourselves in a room or anything. But it's not something that's open to the public to attend. Should it be? Should the public be allowed to watch as the agenda is set?
That would be boring.
It would be. Some people might be.
It could also be very controversial, too.
Yeah.
I've got Natalie and then I have Shelley.
Um, you know what? I'd never really thought about agenda committee being held in public, but I think it really would improve transparency, especially kind of in terms of the, the next kind of questions that are dealing with how do we let the public know that something is coming? Even if we don't have an exact date, having that group meet in public would, would absolutely increase transparency of, of our activities. You know, Mr. LaFleur, I know that you say it's not a committee of council, but it is. And I think really, if we know better, we should do better. So I would say that if it was held in public, it would solve a lot of our problems in terms of the, the public saying they didn't get enough notice that we're talking about whatever issue.
Hey, Joe.
I agree with Natalie and Wes's comments as well. And I don't really understand why we have the two committees and then we're duplicating it in meetings afterwards. So I would just like to see we decide as a whole and then the mayor sets up the agenda following, you know, the information given by the whole council.
You guys catch that? So I'm having it with the noise outside.
I'm, I'm finding Wes's comment interesting. I never thought of it that way because it's just, it's agenda planning. But I did know that the deputy mayor is also welcome to attend as well. And actually, anyone's welcome to attend agenda planning. And even Mike just asked for it late. Whenever you want, you can come. We could probably ask ledge to send that invite to everyone, just so in case they're bored one afternoon, they could zoom in. But that, that's fine with me as, as mayor. But it shouldn't feel like you're excluded, Wes, so. But I can probably guess you probably wouldn't want to come. A half the time, I don't want to be there, but.
Well, so my question is though. My question is, though, is that if you set up a formal meeting, which agenda committee is, and you have quorum of council there, what, what's the legal implication of that?
Okay, that's a good question. Yeah, he did mention that earlier.
Sorry, my apologies, council.
We gotta get these. It's super loud, there's something happening right outside our window.
Can we tell them these things? Are they leaf blowing or what?
It's a, that's just going down here right now. Okay, sorry, we can hear you now.
Okay, well, my question is, is that is what's the legal implication of a, of a formal meeting and formal council meeting?
We'll see about that.
David, do you have an answer for the legal implications of, of quorum?
Yeah, my apologies got distracted over there. So the, if, if, if you set it up as a committee and establish what the quorum will be, if there's no quorum, then you're not going to have an agenda for the next council meeting. You're going to go into a meeting with no agenda and council will have to adopt it from scratch at the, at the next meeting. It doesn't mean there'll be no meeting because council will presumably have set, scheduled the org meeting every year. You know, so there will be a council meeting on such and such date. But if you haven't got a quorum for the body that establishes the agenda, then you'll have to take time at the beginning of the, of the council meeting to establish an agenda. Which is not very efficient, obviously.
Well, I, I, I'm not sure you cut the gist of my question, uh, David. So, so you've got three members of council setting the agenda now. Or you got one, you got the mayor setting, uh, the agenda with, with two other members of the committee there. And, and now a fourth member of council comes, you actually have quorum of council there and they could make a decision without the other three being in place. Is, is, is that a, is there a legal implication there or not?
Yeah, well, through the chair to council broadhead, there doesn't, that doesn't have to be a problem. It, it doesn't have to be any particular legal implication. If you make it clear, use the proper words to make it clear that this is not a meeting within the meaning of the municipal government act, right? You could do it that way.
Cause you could ask the same question, Wes, if four of us go up for a beer.
Well, fair enough. But that's clearly not a meeting.
That's what, that's, that's the thing. So right now it's called agenda planning, it's not a committee of council. So there's legally, we're safe, I think. If Mike shows up next Tuesday to talk about A C A and, but as, what I've noted in my head is that if there's four members of council feeling disengaged from this, we need to make them feel that they're welcome and engaged. So I think even the meeting invite would help with that. And the other thing, David, and I'm going to get to you, Sheena, is although we set the agenda, the one thing I've been very specific about is like Ken, when he's running committee, he declares the agenda. I never do that. I ask my council as a whole to vote on it. If they don't like it, they can change it, amend it, move poll, add it. So it's really being set the moment we vote on it. Isn't that correct?
That's, that's subject now of the next.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Don't like the way I run a meeting?
No, it's just, it's, it's styles and it's, it's, and I like, I like watching other people and their styles of chairing. It was just kind of interesting, but I, I'm very particular that the council on the, on that Monday has the final vote of this is the agenda for the day.
So I think it's, it's literally getting through my, my head what Council Broadhead was getting at. If there, let's say hypothetically, let's say you establish a, a committee of council to set agendas. Let's say it's the mayor and two others. And if you make it clear in the bylaw that all members of council are welcome to attend, but if the voting members are just mayor and two specific members, then that's, that's not a problem. The fact that other council members are present and even make comments doesn't somehow turn it into a council meeting. It's still just the agenda, the agenda committee meeting. So I, I'm not, I'm not concerned with that. That can easily be drafted around.
Okay. Sheena.
Uh, okay, just in response to that first, um, so there's no votes at agenda committee. So saying that there's only so many voting members, we're just using semantics to get around something. But the other concern I have is that we haven't discussed at all about whether or not we will even continue to be a sending committee. Like this is almost like a cart before the horse because the sending committee chairs may no longer exist as they currently are. And so if we say, oh, we're comfortable with this, and then there's no extending committee that's split and decided later on next month, then what is our backup plan? I guess, because we need to discuss that and not assume that we're going to continue with it. I already know how I'm voting on that one, so I'm sure you all know as well. So, um, like, should it really just be the mayor and deputy mayor and then the other chairs are invited? Because then you would have a consistency across the board. Before it was the mayor and deputy mayor. And the irony is that the deputy mayor was showing up in the event that the mayor should like get hit by a bus and that someone else had to take over the meeting, the deputy mayor was going on. And right now we have it with the deputy mayor, the two chairs are there, the mayor, the two chairs there, but the deputy mayor is optional. And the intention really is that they would, that person would know what to do in the event that the, the mayor was not there. So in the current fashion, we've completely disregarded the importance, the deputy mayor not being there because the, um, you know, in the event that Kathy can't show up or whoever happens to be at the mayor at the time can't show up. Um, but, and we're also assuming that there's going to be two chairs moving forward, which is very presumptuous of us. So, um, that, I don't think we really have discussed this in its entirety here about the quorum thing. Like I hate it when we say we can get around it with semantics. That's super annoying to me because that just means that we're just working around it with semantics, but we really know what's going on. Um, and that's a challenge. And the other thing I, when Natalie said about the, look, you can open the public, I agree with her, like I think that you nailed it really well there Natalie. So I'm not going to repeat what you had to say. But we need to really discuss in the event that this does not pass on July fourth or twenty eighth or whatever day that goes forward, uh, how are we going to handle this? And the fact that we're really disregarding the importance of the deputy mayor being able to handle the role, um, because they're off completely optional. That's all I got right now.
This is a question from you, David Moore. Should this be agenda planning or agenda committee? Because of either way semantic, like not semantics, whether we have the two chairs of the other committees or the mayor and the deputy mayor. So I guess maybe your question is, is it mayor or C A O setting the agenda? And is it an informal
Yeah.
meeting or is it a full committee? Those are two questions, because once we decide on that, then who sits there? We can worry about after the committee discussion, right? Is that kind of what you're looking for?
It is, just a, a, a quick comment if I may though, the, the, under the current procedure by law, whoever is the deputy mayor right now in the rotation is invited to sit in on the discussions that lead to the mayor's decision. However, if it's a question of the mayor being absent, the deputy mayor automatically would step into that role, not by the procedure by law, but by virtue of the relevant provision in the municipal government act. That's the function of a deputy mayor to, 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 to act whenever the mayor is unavailable. So that's, that's not a problem, you know, that's taken care of. However, other things that council uses said are very important. And I agree completely with her that they need to be discussed before we go forward. So who's going to set the agendas and?
Well, my opinion is I still think it should be mayor and council because there's political nuances sometimes with agendas. You know, and maybe it should say in consultation with the C A O, right? To make sure that's a very understandable partnership. So look, those of us who sit, tend it, it's not even chaired, we've got to just talk. And I let the committee chairs run their own agendas and I, I like it the way it is. To tell you the honest truth, I like it the way it is. I'd say in practice, we're not, um, sending calendar invites to the deputy mayor. And in practice, if I can't attend, I'm not asking the deputy mayor to attend on my behalf. So that's my fault because I trust Natalie and Kennedy to carry on, right?
Yeah.
So in practice, I can fix that for sure. Yeah.
Sorry, David, when I stand around what other, um, communities are doing, it was interesting. I was, so for sure it was the clerk, city clerk, they call them, or ledge officer was there. Uh, and some of the C A Os were there or another representative of administration, but, um, just usually was just the mayor, the mayor clerk or ledge officer. There was very few other than I think Edmonton, obviously because of its size, it's, it's a little different. But, um, so I mean, we're unique because we have a, have this committee structure. So in some aspects, I'm wondering whether or not can, does this have to be discussed? Because we, as, as Council Hughes has identified, we may not have a committee structure in, um, in another couple of months. So I guess, um, I, I guess maybe this is, uh, I mean, this might be moot if, if we, if we determine that we want the, the current structure to exist when we may not have the current structure too much.
It's not moot because is it, whether we have two standing committees or a committee of whole, is the mayor setting the agenda or not? Doesn't matter either way.
But I, I believe the mayor, I believe the mayor by the position and the M G A should be the ones that, should be, I clearly identified as the individual there for, for council. And then, um, some, obviously the, um, city clerk or our equivalent ledge officer. And, and then, uh, and then I would, I would probably go back to where it was for sure, just to have the deputy mayor. Because you, even if we don't have the committee structure, you do have, you do have additional input in from council for assistance.
So Shelley, your deputy mayor right now, are you getting calendar invites to agenda planning?
No, and I only read it in this yesterday. I didn't even know anything about that.
So that, that's a failure, I think, on our part is the deputy mayor should be getting calendar advice.
But yeah, I'd be, but I, I do go back to Council Broadhead and I realize that under your instruction, um, Mr. LaFleur, I mean, it's not a committee of council. I, I just, I, part of, I guess I worry that there's four members of council setting, uh, when the other three members aren't there, so.
But again, I'm going to interrupt you for two secs. It's not set until council votes on it on the Monday.
That was great. But I, I, I agree, understood, understood. But I'm just saying, are we going, are we jumping ahead of the process? I think for, for, for the purposes of today, I think it's been a good discussion and thank you, Council Broadhead for raising that. Uh, but I think right now, I think for sure I'm happy with the mayor and deputy mayor and legislative officers and staff like coming in because obviously C A O, um, knows what, what the, from my experience, a great deal of, uh, when we're talking about the agenda, we just see a title. We don't know what the actual substance of the report is. And so you need, you need to have that background information to say what that is.
So, yeah, we're going to go Shelley and then Sheena.
Uh, the other thought I had is if like as deputy mayor, if I haven't sat at those committee meetings, even the ones I'm not voting at, then I wouldn't know both sides of it as well, right? So I mean, you're not there for input, you're just there for learning is how I would see it. And, um, I would like to see like the voice of the whole council given to you instead of two sort of.
Yeah. I think you're assuming there's a lot of discussion.
No, no, it's like, it's like, it's like three hours, it's like an hour of your life.
There's no voting.
Never get past.
It's not a committee, right? Sheena.
Sorry. Okay, I'm back. So I agree with Ken, I think that the simplest way to handle this, um, thanks for Ken for like walking it through my brain so I had a solution, is if it was the mayor, like the, ultimately the mayor's going to make the decision about this. And then whenever we've had it even informally, like Kathy, you're like, no, we'll do it this way. And then that's kind of the way it goes. It doesn't like we vote on it. So we should just acknowledge that's what's actually happening is, um, the mayor makes the final decision about where it goes and doesn't go, and that's fine. Um, and then I think the deputy mayor should be there, not just because like the goal is not whether or not the deputy mayor becomes mayor or serves as the mayor's function in the meeting. It's whether or not the deputy mayor is prepared when they have to go serve that function, the meeting. And if they had to serve it last minute because whatever, you know, Kathy gets Ebola and then she can't do it and she calls in at one o'clock.
And then she gets Ebola?
Yeah, yeah, she's having a bad week. But like if something happens last minute and the mayor can't do it, the deputy mayor at least knows what's expected to be on the agendas. They are not walking in blind. And that's something that the, as an invite is not really expected. And then what I personally would do, I look at the solution is I look and say, okay, the mayor, um, the deputy mayor, um, and that the other chairs would be invited and the rest of the council is invited, but the chairs are invited, but not expected. Because then, or the, the chairs of the committees, if it goes down to one committee, that chair may also rotate like we did in the past. Um, like I'm, you know how we had it before where it changed depending on whoever the deputy mayor was? Or it could be a standing person who handles it for the full time. And so if we said the deputy mayor and mayor, the committee chairs are recommended, then it will be, um, then we'll cover it, I guess is what we're saying. Because really the, the chairs should know what they're, what's going to be coming up on their committees. So then it would be unexpected for them to show up the week that that's being decided. And then the rest of it's in, in the other point. But the fact that, that the chairs have a higher precedence than the deputy mayor it really negates the, the function of what the deputy mayor has to do in the event the mayor can't show up. So I agree with Ken's solution.
I'm, so I'm hearing mayor, mayor and
Deputy.
consultation with various whomevers, um, still sets the agenda. And I haven't really heard a lot of consensus on, you know, an informal or committee, like a formal committee. My preference would be, um, keeping it the way we have it. This is formal committee, just, just another layer that it's already, I find a very bureaucratic, not hate for it. It's just a heavy, I don't mind the public watching, like they could come, but I don't want, if it was on, if, I don't want them to have input. Like they could YouTube stream it and watch it, but that's getting to be just too much. So if you want to YouTube stream our meetings, that's fine. There's nothing that's secretive and honestly, no one will ever watch. Maybe the Gazette. So can we move on from this one for now? Okay.
Natalie, can I just say one more thing? It's just, I wouldn't YouTube stream it because sometimes there's topics of confidential nature that's being discussed at the meetings. But if we just said it was like the disclosure of non-confidential items was available to the public, it's a different ball of wax. Because every time that we discuss something that would be an in camera topic, sometimes we discuss it and expand on it, like what are we talking about that time? And if it's YouTube streamed, you couldn't do that. So, um, I would say like, there needs to be something where you can say that the, the comp, the topic was allowed to be discussed to the public, but we didn't YouTube stream it because we didn't want to go in editing camera six times during the meeting. You know what I'm saying? So that's all.
Yeah, I like the way it is, so, yeah, just trying to make it transparent and stuff. But let's talk about who's the, the adoption of the agenda, which you're right, I did jump ahead. Do you have a recommendation on this one? David?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, so through the chair to council, uh, the best practices that I've seen are that, yes, it's, it's okay to, the agenda isn't formal until it's adopted. That happens right at the beginning. However, the agenda, the proposed agenda that's published has to be adopted unless one of two things. If you want to adopt an emergent item, just a simple majority is fine, right? To, to, to add an emergent item. If it's anything other than an emergent item, I would recommend a two thirds majority be required because the public will have seen the agenda, maybe it's Friday, right?
Yeah.
If you're going to make significant substantive changes to the agenda without any notice to the public, I don't think that's good, good practice. So my recommendation is adopt the agenda. It's not, it's not official until it's adopted right at the beginning of the council meeting. But if you want to add an emergent item, simple majority. If you want to add something other than emergent, I then should be a super majority, two thirds.
Yeah, okay, I'm on that.
Yeah. Okay.
Anyone else have a problem with that? When was the last time we ever added anything to the agenda? It's really, it's rare.
I can, one item for sure, but yeah, it is rare, but the point is right now that possibility always, always exists. And if you want to make sure that that doesn't exist, the procedure by law should say, let's make it hard, let's make it a super.
Okay.
Okay, so even for committee business or is that committee is separate sometimes? This, we're just talking about council though, right?
Oh, yeah, this is, yeah.
Yeah, good, okay, good, okay. I'm running the meeting the way I want to run.
Okay, that was an easy one. Okay, number four is, uh, oh, this was interesting. Let's, here's criticism from the public is not enough time for resident to consider whether, okay, it's because it's published on Friday and then they have to decide if they're coming by Monday. My question is, because we have draft agenda, like the bones of it without the package underneath it, that agenda planning two, three weeks out. Can we start printing those on the website?
If that's what you'd like to do.
Yeah.
No, no reason why that could, could not be done.
So the press and the, and the residents would say, oh, like June seventh, like they could come and say, when is the solar farm? Or when is Mike's motion on A C A? They could look, so here's our, here's our draft, not set in stone agendas for the next month.
So if, if I may, you're, as council members are all aware, if an agenda package, if all the background material isn't available on the Wednesday, you know, that's always our target, but we miss it more than we.
Hey, just give us the title page.
Send out just the basic agenda, but that could be done as early as the Tuesday, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I, a section on the website.
If I could just also say something, the agenda is also two weeks out on City Lights. So it's in the Gazette and it's just the draft agenda and it has a visal that it's subject to change.
Yeah.
Um, but we do have it two weeks out in it after agenda.
But I think, sorry. Sorry, I think that through your worship is that, I think what the public's asking for is they want the, the meat and bones early like that, like prior to the Friday. And I think that's the difficulty is trying. Earlier like that, like prior to the Friday. And I think that's the difficulty is trying to get that part posted earlier. Yeah.
If we were going to do the meat and bones on, with that much lead time, our, our business at City Hall grind to halt, I feel. Right? So. If you see it on the, in City Lights or on the website that this item is coming and you're interested in it, then Friday, go read it. You know why? Historically, from my understanding, is we didn't do it till three o'clock on Friday. So we would miss the Saturday Gazette deadline. Because we didn't want the Gazette calling us all weekend, getting our opinion on what we're going to vote on on Monday, because that's bad governance, right? So that was historically why, it was Bill Holtby that I'm sure did that. Yeah, am I right on that?
Yeah. It was just, um, yeah, just jumping, it was really interesting reading, I think it was Red Deer, but I also read Spruce Grove. And Fort Saskatchewan and some of the other municipalities around us. And they have a, a lot stricter requirement in relation to when the agenda gets out and when, and when individuals. Can actually register, register it and Beaumont's, it's.
Ours is very, ours is very loose.
Yeah, it, I was really surprised at how tight and how, I mean, even Red Deer's is a lot tighter than what we currently have right now. Well, I mean, not that we don't, they don't give them that timeframe. They, they, they have a whole different rules for when you registered to speak to council, what you can speak to council on, time limits on what you can speak to council on. Material you present to council on. And so I was actually quite surprised that other municipalities aren't feeling those same similar pressures. And whether you want to lose or whatever the term you want to talk about, I was, I was actually surprised. So historically, whether that was as you were saying, as, as the reason, I don't know. But it was actually, I think we, we do a much better job at informing or allowing our residents to come. And speak in front of council on, on every, on matters. I mean, I, I mean, I know, I, I mean, I'm not going to speak for Councilor Killik. I don't even see him here anymore. I know when he was a member, a citizen, I mean, he needed, Friday was not enough time for some of the meaty topics that he wanted to present on, get information on. So where, where I'm going with this is, is I, I think we're, I think we're pretty, pretty good at what we do currently. And if we can maintain that, if it's not too much of a, because the other thing is, is it is a burden on staff to get everything to us, even on the Thursday or the Friday. So, I mean, and I, because some of the reports are quite, as we know, from last one, we had what, sixteen hundred pages? And I realized there's some material in the agenda that's repetitive or already distributed. And that's something where I'm going to go to it later when the topic comes up.
Good point, though, the public is exposed to the majority of the topics at committee. If they still really have this burning desire to speak to council, they're still, they still can come to council and.
Yeah.
On that meeting that in chambers, even though it's on consent, they could speak to, we could call it off consent, whatever. But, and look at how infrequently that happens.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
I feel we're a very open council with lots of time, so I don't see any need to change anything except for maybe put some future agendas on the website.
Yeah, I mean, anyways, I jumped in. I don't know whether somebody.
Someone else that's their hand up, so.
Is Mike off so I, did he fall off?
Having trouble with this.
Is he listening on the phone?
No, I'm here. I gave up my internet.
Yeah, that's good. As long as you can hear us. And I won't be able to see if your hand is up, so just.
You're living in that backwards country.
Just start talking if you need to say anything, but Sheena does have her head up. Go ahead, Sheena.
Um, now I forgot my point. Oh, you know what, what we could do is I understand how often you're trying to get it out, but often the, it could done completely by Thursday. So what if it said something like the, the agenda will be really, could be released as early as Monday morning at nine or Monday morning. Or sorry, Friday morning at nine or Friday morning at ten, but will be released in its entirety by this time. So, so that way, if it is available earlier, it's available. But they could say, okay, well, we'll put out everything that we have as a Thursday night to be released by the end of Thursday night or by Friday morning. And then if there's stuff that's still lagging, then it will just be, you know how you have it right now and it says, we're still filling in these blanks. But if it's available and you have it done, and ninety percent of the stuff typically is done, sometimes it's fully done by Thursday night. We could say it's available as of Friday morning, just because if people do have, let's say they have a concern. Giving it some of the end of Friday going into a weekend is really challenging. And I'm going to look to you, Mike, to, to discuss this as well, somebody who's been recently a resident and not, and recently just now in a counselor. So that changeover, but it allows the people just one more day to have that ability to have a discussion on a business day and not the day of the council meeting. If they do want to talk to somebody or get a better reference or of, of the material, what they're trying to discuss. So if the material is available, could we say something like it, it's, it could be available as of this time? But depending on staff availability, but it will be available by three o'clock on Friday. So that way, if we do have it, they can see it. And if it doesn't, they'll know when it's coming. But then we're not, then it's not additional, other than just the one extra upload of what we have of coming. Would also address a bit more of it, because I think the challenge is that people are expected to do something and respond and prepare their material in response to something.
That's the argument.
So, Sheena, good point, and I'm going to give you right away, Natalie, but Cheryl, David, what is the process? So we get an email and it goes on to the member site. It's obvious, and then is there a trigger at three P M. on Friday, then do a different upload to the. So question for council, do you want, because if it's already, you could do both at the same time, whether it's ten A M. on Friday or three P M. on Friday. Does council want to have the agenda in their hands for at least an hour or two before it's public? Or do you want to release it at the exact same time that it's all public? Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, but the earlier the better.
So why don't we just say, when it's public, when, like, honestly, what I, I don't want the, the public to have it before I have it, right? That, so half the time I don't open it up to Saturday or Sunday anyway. So I'm fine if you released it, as soon as it's ready for council, you could take it to the public. And I can't expect any more than that, right?
Kathy, the reason why I suggested the Friday morning is just so that there's a predictability. So because sometimes what we don't want is people like checking Wednesday, Thursday, not seeing anything.
And then you can have a disclaimer. I think there is a disclaimer for sure.
Yeah, like there needs to be something where they can expect, would know when to look for it, so they're not constantly looking. But I think that if it's available earlier, giving them that flexibility, but also predictability allows it. Because my concern is I don't want staff to have, because they're rushing to try to get it done. When they, they need to have like a set, okay, this is one we are hoping to have most of it available. And then they can meet that timeline. So that's kind of what I was thinking, you know, but anyway, that's it. Okay, sorry, we'll stop talking.
I, I honestly, I'd say three P M. for the public, but you can have a disclaimer set if it's ready early, it'll be here early. But if you say ten A M., we don't get it by ten A M. half, like, I know you guys get stressed on, sometimes on Thursday, Friday to get them ready out for us, right? Is that true? Yeah, so, so I don't want to commit you guys to an earlier timeline than three P M. on Friday. But you could say as a disclaimer, when it's available to council, it'll be available to the public. So if it's earlier, better. If it's not, three o'clock through deadline. Yeah. Natalie?
Yeah, I, I would just comment that I really like the simplicity of the Red Deer bylaw. It just said, when it's available, it will be out, kind of what we're talking here, but I don't think we need to go into a lot of detail. And, you know, even I think of the, the emails that we get from ledge saying, hey, like, partial agenda is available on the members website. I just delete those emails and I look at it, you know, on Saturday when it's ready. So I, I, I'm not concerned about kind of the public seeing it before we do. Because I think they already have access to it before I have time to open it up, so.
That's true.
I, I, I appreciate the fact that they come out and that they're, they're, that it's ready. Because if I have opportunities, I, I will open it, at least scan to see what the issues and if anything's changed on that and, and whatever. Are you done now? Sorry, the mayor's just walked in another tea. The, the question I have then is, I mean, I've noticed part of what we did about Monday meetings was just to help out the Gazette in relating to reporting. And meeting their reporting deadlines for Tuesday at noon. But, you know, I've noticed the format changing a little bit and the fact that they're now watching virtually as well. And maybe, I, I, I tell you, one of the issues that would help out administration the most and help out council and give us a little bit more time is move our meetings to Tuesday. And I know we've discussed it many, many times, but I, I, I just honestly believe that we should, whether it's engaging with the Gazette. And because I've noticed even now, some of their stories are spread out.
Yeah, they don't report on that same week.
You know, they're not all involved and I, and I'm not in the newspaper business, so I don't know if that's just because they're trying to fill, fill. Spots in relation to their paper. I don't know how that works. But I think, I think that there has to be a, a real discussion over Tuesday again, because, I mean, we are bumping into those timelines. But I, I'm, I mean, so I'm not sure if we're willing to go there yet or not, but I think it's something to.
I just whispered to Shelly, did we talk about that this term? And she said, yes, we did. We voted against it.
Yeah, we did, we did. And, but I just think that there's an opportunity maybe to revisit it again. And, and maybe we have to do consultation with, with the members of the Gazette to say. And, and, but I mean, because there is a lot of stress on administration to get them in by, by that Friday. This would give them one extra day and also give the community one extra day to, to respond and prepare. And to, to see if they want to even come on Tuesday. So anyways, I, it had to be said.
Wouldn't it be too late for the Gazette if we're doing our meeting on Tuesday?
But that's the whole point. But that's the whole, that's their whole argument was their deadlines aren't there. But that was before, that when they used to have two, a Wednesday paper and a Saturday paper, the majority of council ended up in Saturday papers anyways.
Yeah.
So I mean, yes, you're a hundred percent correct, Shelly. The concern would be whether or not the Gazette would be able to get the stories out in time.
Ten days later or whatever.
Yeah, it would, they would always maybe.
And honestly, they're moving, they're moving to such an online format that. Because they're only weekly, but they want to be more relevant day to day, so they're going to online. So I think they probably wouldn't be even mine.
No, and I'm not saying we do that. I'm just saying we need to keep that discussion alive.
Yeah, I agree. I, I would, I would love to say.
I think one of the things that came out of the editorial board meeting we had is that is asked for technical briefings on some of the topics. And but Tuesday meetings would allow that to happen, where they'd get the agenda, they can figure it over the weekend and then meet with a staff member on the Monday for the Tuesday meeting.
And then they would already be.
They would have, they would have some, they would have some background information otherwise. But anyways, that was just something that came up. We can't do that right now. We just don't have the, the time to do it. But that would provide that opportunity to be able to do those technical briefings.
One other.
Yeah, just going before we go off the Tuesday, I think there's also a time crunch to get Tuesday council, agenda planning would now be Wednesday. You would have.
Oh, you, you, everything moves.
On the Gazette by Friday or on the website by Friday, right? That scrunches your timeline even more, right?
But if you scan, if you scan the, all of the municipalities again, I'm sorry to sound like a broken record, but I wanted to see whatever the people were doing. And I, whether I have a life or not, I like to watch other council meetings. The majority of council meetings are Tuesdays.
Okay. Okay, Shelly and then Mike.
Just one quick question for legislative, what happens between, say, ten P M. Thursday night and ten A M. Friday morning? Like, how much, you know, when are you still working on that agenda? Would it be like eight A M. till ten A M. Friday morning? Or is it complete generally late Thursday?
Well, I think I can speak for the staff. You'd love it to be complete. I mean, things sometimes come in late. Everyone's under enormous pressure. There are a number of directors and. You see, always even at times that just get stuff in at the last minute because they've just got a multitude of things to do. So, yeah, sometimes we are working real hard on first thing Friday morning. I've seen the staff show up at seven Friday morning to just get it done, right? That's not going to change. Never going to change.
Get it done.
Get her done.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, can we move on? All right. Oh, Councilor Killik.
All right, Mike.
Yeah.
Do you have a question?
I was just, I think everything's been answered. Soon is the better. Get it out to council as soon as possible. Give the public as much time to review it as possible. Most importantly, give staff as much time to prepare it. And if they spend all that time and effort and work preparing it, we, you know, if we need to move it to a Tuesday. I think the Gazette is already, as you mentioned, Mayor, that they are going virtual on their website. So the paper is becoming, the paper deadline reporting has become less important. As they have an online, you know, almost daily update kind of presence. So as, as long as we're giving our staff the time to prepare it and, and we have enough time to review it, I, I would love the idea of moving to a Tuesday.
Ready like Friday.
So good later, yeah.
Everything rolls downhill.
Okay. The next one, I think, is probably pretty easy. Should the public be allowed to address council by Zoom? And I'm a yes on that one.
It's got to be limited, I'd say, because I mean, we have like fifty people.
Well, you could have fifty people in chambers then, right?
All right, that's fine. I just thought that the question needed to be asked.
Oh, for sure. It's just something that has made us even more easy to interact with. For sure, yeah. Because people always question why we start so early, two o'clock, we can't adjust, but now you could do it from your office, right? So I love it. So Natalie?
Yeah, I would just echo that. That's a hard yes. I can send out everyone can, an article on how that impacts, you know, inclusion and equity. Allowing it online. I would say that our most, the tightest meeting that we've run in the last four and a half years was the public hearing on Boudreaux. And that was all online. And, and it was, it was excellent and it, it gave people the opportunity to, to come when they wouldn't have been able to otherwise.
And everybody had their say.
Everybody had their say, yeah. And I think it was tight because I was pretty militant on the five minutes. Mute. But we had to.
Yeah, I would argue to, well, as part of this bylaw too, you know, we talk about interrupting the chair. That doesn't happen at meetings that are that tight. And I think that's already in our bylaw, but I, I think it's just important, kind of as a reminder that. You know, the, the chair, the chair runs the show and I think we forget that sometimes.
Sheena. Yeah, I agree about the virtual thing, Kathy. You and I are on the same page as well. Because, you know, people have a hard time coming when it's whatever time, whether it's a one or two or whatever time, getting off of work and taking half a day off of work to be able to do it. But if they can do virtual, then they can just say, hey, boss, I'm going to take my break at two twenty when I can then talk to council. And they can, it, it makes it much more available to the public. So I agree with that. The other thing of just about the Tuesday meeting thing, I know you, I just can go back really quick on that, is that we didn't, we can't assume what the Gazette's going to say. And I know that when this discussion came up again earlier about the Tuesday meeting, they were very concerned about doing that. They still want to have stuff to put into the Wednesday paper that's relevant and timely. And so I don't think we should just assume that just because that they're doing a lot of things online, that they're okay with it. Let's just not guess their answer without actually consulting them. I think that's important to make sure we have a good relationship. That's all.
I wasn't guessing.
And we, we had an editorial board meeting with them, so we've, we've been doing a better job of working with them. But we're not structuring our procedure by law around the Gazette, right? So, so that's a yes for public. Is there a separate question on public hearings?
It's coming up.
Okay, right. So the next one is six. This is about, should council meetings be live streamed in real time for viewing purposes only as opposed to being taped and posted on the website later? As was the former practice. There may be additional costs, but some said minimal, right? Yeah. I like that searching heart for every nickel of savings. Yeah, no, I agree. I appreciate it, but this is what I think I would like to keep with the YouTube streaming for me. Yeah.
What is the cost of it? Sorry, the difference, the difference between the cost is that when we, when we strive, when we strive live, we have to have a number of staff present. Yeah, from communications and I T. But if it's, if it's taped and then put on the website after, it's like, it's, it's much easier to do. What you, that, that used to happen prior to COVID.
Well, but yeah, prior to COVID, we had a third-party contractor come in and actually do a different, because, I mean, we had different equipment and everything else, right? So the intent is not to go back to that. The intent is to stay on YouTube, right?
It's difficult to search, I find, when it was posted to the website after. It's, it's hard to find. So every, every member of the. every, every member of the public knows how to go into YouTube and subscribe to the city and then just, it's, it's much easier. So.
Okay.
Natalie, I saw your hand up. It's down now. Okay, you're good. Okay.
Okay.
All right, what's next one? At present, there's no specific provision in the procedure by law regarding how often a council member may attend a meeting through electronic connection. Is it acceptable that council members or would be preferable some kind of limit how many meetings in a calendar year? Okay, so, and then there's the in camera question separate? Yes, okay. So this is just should you attend in person? So thoughts, Wes and then Natalie.
So Wes has no.
You're muted, Wes.
There's no thoughts.
My personal thought here is that we can make a statement about the preferred nature of attendance in public being in person, but I don't think we should limit the ability to attend virtually. My circumstance this morning, you wouldn't want me in that room hacking the way I did and, uh, mind you, I hear there's a few hacking in there too. So anyway, I, I just don't think, given the nature of the electronic environment that we're in today, that, that, that this is an issue that we really need to deal with. We can make a statement about the preferred nature of being in public, being in person. But I mean, really, is, I think it's a good thing what we've got going.
Adley.
I agree with Wes.
Anyone else?
I agree as well.
Mike, oh, you're back. So you're good. All right. Sheena, how do you?
Yeah, I agree with Wes as well. I think it's well said. I think it's there's circumstances, especially just considering that we're not completely out of any such health situation right now to say that, you have to attend or something when you may not be able to or don't feel comfortable with it. I think that should be respected. So I think it's better to have us here electronically than not at all.
So I'm, I'm, I'm in the differing opinion because I feel like everyone in this room was elected and they should be in person, should be doing their job. And I know you say you're doing your job virtually, but it's, it's harder to chair a meeting. It's harder to read each other. It's harder to have that kind of that full communication spectrum, which is sometimes verbal, sometimes body language. So my question for you, David, is the old way, if you couldn't attend a meeting, you could call in. Uh, it wasn't great. You couldn't call in for your camera, but you could call in. Um, but the, isn't there a provision in the M G A that says if you can't attend? So we could say if you can't attend in person, but you want to go virtual, just get permission from the chair or something like that, or, or a vote of council, it used to be, if you couldn't attend more than eight meetings or whatever it is.
So the, the in through the chair, the M G A provision allows you by bylaw to provide. That's why this discussion today, because if you want to be able to attend electronically, it should be put in the bylaw. Now, we did, this was one of the stopgap things we did when the government of Alberta came in with its electronic meetings regulation, which was okay, but it didn't cover every issue. So we did put it into the bylaw and that's really all I'm asking. Is this, is this something we should consider now? Going forward, this is a new way of doing business. And I'm hearing consensus other than yourself.
Yeah, so. What I'm hearing though, David, is there's, there's reasons that you could need to be at, at home, whether you're sick or honestly, if you're on vacation, you feel like spending half your vacation on Zoom, that's awesome. Or Sheena's had some life circumstances. All of those can be written to the bylaw to be excused, excusable excuses to attend virtually. And then, and then the bylaw says you can attend six annually just without an excuse or something. I know Greg Curry says you can only attend eight um, virtually a year. A lot of people are going back to just kind of saying you, you can, but not, not permanently, right? And I just, I feel like not being in chamber should be fine with a reason. If you don't have a reason, come to work. That's my thought. But we could, we could revisit this in a bit, maybe when the pandemic is really over. But right now I'm just, I'm frustrated because it's hard to chair. It's really hard to chair. Mike and then Natalie.
Sorry, yeah. Uh, I, I agree that there's being it, uh, in council meeting and in the room and having the opportunity to, you know, talk before the meeting with our colleagues and share comments, uh, just build a team and then, and I think that's very helpful. I, I certainly as a new counselor found it very helpful in, in having that direct, um, interaction during council meetings. So I, I like the idea of absolutely, you know, my situation today. Um, we, we will all have situations in the future when we want to attend virtually, but it, I, I don't know if it needs to be. Maybe, maybe we do need to make it prescriptive, that you have to be there at least for three quarters of the meetings, uh, uh, in, in person and, and one quarter of virtually, uh, unless extenuating circumstances or something like that. But I, 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 I agree. I think we are elected to represent the people and work together as a council uh, is much more productive when we're available to be there in person, in particular for the in camera sessions. And I was, I, I think I would have said I would be the last person to talk about in camera, um, sessions.
Well, we're going to get to that one next. I think that's the next question, Mike. Yeah, so. Natalie?
Oh, sorry. Counselor Killick, are you done? Okay. Um, I guess I'll, I'll expand on my comments. So I'm, I'm, I really don't think we should add language that restricts council members from how they attend. Um, and, and although I agree that it's better to physically be in person and Mayor, I totally agree with you about chairing an in-person meeting is so much easier than, than chairing a hybrid meeting. I chaired my first in-person meeting last week with Homeland Housing with everyone present. It was amazing. Um, but, um, you know, I, I don't want members to feel pressured to end, attend in person. You know, today, Council Broadhead, um, i- is staying home because, uh, because that's what's best for, for everyone. But at the end of the day, it's not my business, uh, why, why he's made that decision. Um, and you know, it really goes to all the, um, the efforts in terms of inclusion to make people feel awkward for um, making that decision for themselves. And even, you know, this is an extreme example, but if, if St. Albert elects a, a snowbird, then they've elected a snowbird and that's totally okay. Um, and, and I, I don't think we, we should be making those, uh, value judgments. Um, be, you know, as, as in a bylaw. So, um, you know, I want someone who's immunocompromised to be able to participate as much as they can. You know, if someone was, say, going through cancer treatments and so they don't want to be there in person, I would be absolutely okay with them attending virtually a hundred percent of the time. And it's none of my business, um, is, is kind of how I feel about that.
You disagree with me about the snow burden. I saw your face, David. You have to live in our community. You have to live in our community to be on council. So if you're living six months down in Arizona, that you shouldn't be on council.
There's an AirDre counselor who lives in Winnipeg.
That's wrong. Yeah, yeah. That's my, I, I, my elected, if I'm not on council, I want them at parade. I, I want them for coffee availability and that kind of stuff. So there's more to council than this, right? Dawn? You're counting? Oh, okay. Dawn's counting heads. Sheena, you're up next.
Yeah, you know, the challenge is just that if you can't attend or you don't feel comfortable and your choices are in person or nothing, you can actually miss seven meetings and then attend on the eighth and attend virtually and still be on council. And you've now lost that input from that person for those seven weeks because you put a hard line in the sand. So, um, I would rather if the situation occurs that you can't attend either way. We have done this for two and a half years successfully. Um, and I understand Kathy, it's more difficult, but to be fair, you actually do it very well. So you have absorbed it. And not that it's not hard to do, but you're doing a really good job of it. So I don't, I think that the council meetings are still very productive as is. And I know that there's benefits to going in person. That's not the issue. Um, and if we choose to have to do it virtually, then, um, it's to our own loss. I understand that. But that's not about deciding for someone else. And the reality is that just disclosing and everything and having to have a justification from it. We, there are some times where you just want your privacy maintained and not have to go and have to explain it and then have it being broadcast as it just was done a few minutes ago about someone's life situations. So, you know, just respecting the fact that people can make their own decisions about how they're going to attend and there's consequences to doing it either way. Um, but that our intention is to have as much attendance from public, from the council as possible. And that we do attend when we can attend in person. And just respecting that we're all going to be grownups in this situation, I think needs to be done. I, respecting people's privacy while trying to maintain the job integrity, I think needs to be at the foremost and not saying if you don't attend three quarters of it, because then you could just say I'm not attending at all. And would you rather have us not here at all? Or if we can't attend in person? And having to go and ask for permission every single time is more of an employee employer relationship. And we are not employees of the mayor or anyone else. We're all individuals that were elected to represent. So I think that, um, putting something in prescriptive could backfire. That's it. And I thought Natalie said again very well.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess I can see where everybody's coming from. I, I appreciate everybody's comments and I, 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 I agree with all of them. Um, and, but I mean, obviously everybody knows my, my, uh, uh, preference is always in person. I mean, I guess that's just the way I'm wired. So I mean, and also I, I, I'm like, uh, Counselor Killick, who, you know, I always learn something every day from con- conversations, maybe almost because I've forgotten before and now I'm relearning. But, uh, I think, I think, I mean, I, I, I just think right now we're coming out of, uh, the last two years and maybe this is a premature conversation, but it's not one that we can, uh, we should forget. Maybe we can revisit, uh, in the second uh, year or so, because right now I, I agree, right? I don't want to be prescriptive and, and identifying a, a number or, uh, uh, three quarters or one quarter because of all the previous comments, which are really valuable. So, um, I mean, and, I mean, and the M G A actually recognized it when they made data changes and recognized the, the value of electronic meetings. It's not my preference, like I said already, but I, I can understand it. And, um, we've just shown that we can actually hold a very complicated public hearing on, uh, online or virtually. So, uh, but I'm, but I would like to revisit this again because there is so much value. I mean, even our last council, which was a very heavy council, um, was very productive, just having everybody in the room again. So I, I just think it's easier to learn. It's easier to learn from. And it's easier to get understanding when you're actually having face-to-face conversations versus something um, uh, virtually, um, looking into somebody's bedroom or den. Or the stars. Anyways, that's my comment.
All right, I think we've got the hand up just.
Yeah, just one more comment. Um, you know, I, I think that we all work very hard. So to distinguish, you know, being in person or on, on Zoom as not doing your job or not working. I mean, I put a ton of hours in, way more than I thought council, council would be. So I mean, Zoom has saved my daily situation sometimes. And I mean, um, I find the Zoom easier than in person, but that's just me. And I'd like to have the option. I'd like to not be pleased.
Okay, let's have this in conversation about in camera. That's the next one, isn't it? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so our old procedure bylaw did not allow you, you could call in for a meeting, especially if you were traveling, but you couldn't participate in the in-camera session. And there was a specific reason for that. And that was because there's no guarantee who's in the room. Um, while you're in in camera, and in camera is supposed to be obviously confidential. So my vote would be, um, first of all, yeah, I, I would say no, um, no, first I'll go back to the other one. If we're going to attend virtually, cameras have to be on all the time. That's, that's something I do find frustrating, especially with Alberta municipalities. When I was, uh, chairing, or chairing those meetings, have people have their cameras off and you don't even know if they're actually in the room. I'd call on people and they wouldn't answer. So they're who knows where they are. So cameras have to be on. That's, because you're interacting with the public too. But for in camera, um, I think it's, I think it could be a slippery slope, you know, even if your spouse hears what you're saying, um, or even sees, you, you could have headphones on, but somebody could be walking by and seeing the PowerPoint that's displayed on your screen. So I feel like confidential, you have to preserve that and you should be in person. So I can't remember whose hand went up first. Wes, then I'll go to Natalie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I tend to disagree with you. I, you know, the, the, the issue of, uh, the electronic environment that we're in is that with the breakout rooms, we can, we can segregate, uh, council. Those that are in camera and those are not, we don't, uh, we preserve, uh, the integrity of in camera by not broadcasting all of those things. But the reality of people in the room, uh, I mean, you, you trust, uh, council members to hold in confidence those issues that are discussed, whether it's in chambers or whether it's over Zoom. And, uh, the, the fact that, uh, uh, you don't trust us when we're not in the room is saying something. Uh, I think that trust should be extended. Uh, if, if I'm entering an in-camera room, I understand that that's confidential information and it's for my ears and eyes only. And I make sure that there is no one else in the room or, uh, within your shot of what's going on. And, uh, so, so the, the imperative for me to hold in camera, uh, confidentially information I hear, whether I'm on Zoom or whether I'm in person remains the same in my estimation anyway. That's my thoughts. Thanks.
Natalie?
Yeah, I, I would echo, um, Council Broadhead's comments. I think it really comes down to, um, trust, um, but also inclusion and accessibility. Um, and so I, you know, that's, that's the reason why I want to continue to see, um, that being an option for members of council. Um, for the video, yes, I agree that faces are better, but I think there are a lot of reasons why that might not be possible, you know? Uh, Counselor Killick today is having internet issues. I've had internet issues as well. And, um, I, I think we really need to have that level of trust that, you know, if, you know, right now Sheena could be in Starbucks, but I need to trust that if we go in camera, um, she's done things that, that will ensure that our conversation is, is confidential. Um, and, and I think that's really important to, to have one council.
Go ahead, Shelley.
Uh, the one comment I have, and I agree with, you know, uh, Counselor Jolly and Broadhead, but, um, sometimes the in-person, we get on different tangents, like talking about things that are not even related to the meeting, you know, like, and the conversation goes a little bit long and I just see those in-camera minutes ticking along. So it, it, it's begins being more time in camera as a public total that we don't need to be doing. You know, or getting your coffee or getting your snack or that kind of thing. It's just the, the time that's spent there. I think it's more efficient, um, online.
Sheena?
Yeah, um, I agree with Natalie and Wes. And it's just that if we're going to have the, the meetings, then we have to allow the council members to attend the full meeting. Um, if we're going to say that we're also allowing it to happen electronically, otherwise you're really handicapping. Um, and also, let's say four people are electronic and you only have three people in person, which has happened more than once. Uh, like right now, you have three people. So if you were to say that the in-camera portion wasn't available, you wouldn't have quorum to do the in-camera portion. Because we're deliberately excluding members that are attending virtually for whatever reason. So, um,
Force it anyway.
That, that, you know, that's just like an inadvertent consequence of saying that was that if you had to go in camera today, you couldn't go in camera. Because we have four people that are attending virtually. So I think that, um, just so you know, Natalie, I'm not in Starbucks. So just to give you some level of assurance.
We're not in camera either.
Yeah, but. I'll just tell you right now, I talked to Rick McGyver about this on the weekend. He was, he thought about it and he's like, holy crap, we could have people. Yeah, he, he doesn't have the level of trust with the three hundred and sixty, uh, municipalities and there's seven to five to thirteen councils. He does not know, we're going to see an M G A amendment to enforce this anyway. Yeah. It's not high on his priority list, but, but he's like, holy, that's not good. So. Yeah.
I, I, I think my only comment would be on, on, just on the practicality and process wise for just what, uh, Sheena just raised would be if you're, if we just in the previous paragraph said we can permit electronic meetings, then you're right. We, just from a process standpoint, we may not have quorum when we go in camera. And so I think that would be awkward. So we'd be, I, again, this is some. And so I think that would be awkward. So we'd be, I, again, this is something maybe we revisit if uh the government decides that that's what changes are in the MGA.
Go ahead. Just gonna um mention that in previous municipalities I've worked in for in camera, when people were away, they had to uh sign a declaration that they're going to be in a private space with no other people around them during the in camera.
Do that.
And I was basically through, well, those days it was fax. Uh, you could do email scan or whatever it is and, and have a signed declaration that you'll.
Did you print that off on a dot matrix?
Anyways, that is a way that, that at least you can get some level of assurance.
But I, I, don't we, I mean, I take your point, uh, Carrie, but don't we, uh, when we swear our oath, I think we pretty much agree that that's, we're gonna uphold the uh.
Yeah, I, I. But do you be surprised how comfortable people get?
Oh, really? No, I wouldn't be surprised. I, I wouldn't be surprised. But I mean, maybe there's a gentle, there's just a reminder for purposes of the meeting. Uh, we, when we read it, go, we're going in camera, that those members of council on, on um attending virtually. I mean, it, it would obviously, but uh saying anything in relation to council members, it's just something that we have in our procedure by law and process so that we're, we protect it.
If we're gonna allow it, maybe we just have a section that says if you're attending, you know, you've got your headphones on and you're in the room by yourself. Somebody's in the bathroom.
In the washroom.
You're on vacation, screw your rooms.
This may be a, a good subject for an amendment, which is coming later anyway, to the code of conduct by law.
Yeah, okay.
Other than procedure by law.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, so the, is this the script? Yes, number nine. No procedural script for the, in the current law for a chair to follow conducted public hearings. It's funny because you actually wrote me a script. I have it laminated sitting in my desk.
The bylaw.
Exactly.
Should it be, should it be, it's right in the bylaw. You follow this script and nothing else.
Yeah. I'm wondering if the whole, there should be a whole appendix on public hearings.
Yeah, that's what Red Deer did. That's what Red Deer.
Why these three are grouped together.
Yeah.
Yeah. Red Deer has a, I think, they handle public hearings really well.
Yeah.
In their bylaw. I think we should do the same, but these are just some specific things that I wanted to ask about.
Sure. So uh what, yeah, so does anyone have a script for a public hearing and an appendix to the bylaw? Sound good? I'm fine with that.
Just an appendix, yeah. And everybody knows.
I also, I need clarity. So, and I think I have this right. If a public, if the public is speaking during a council meeting, they get five minutes. Same with a public hearing, but in public hearing section, I think it says if they're representing a group, they get 10. But that doesn't happen in regular meetings. I think I just have to be flexible. I think we should probably put that in. Yep. Regular presentations as well as the public hearing presentations.
No problem with that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Then the next one, if I may, Madam Chair.
Madam Mayor, just a question real quick before we leave that point.
Yeah.
So if a, if a, if a individual is representing a group, do they have to indicate the group and the members thereof? And then the members of that group can't speak, given that that individual is speaking on their behalf?
We had that sort of for the Boodle One.
Yes, the current practice, and it's not well fleshed out because we did this on the fly. The current practice is that when, when registering, everyone that, that you say you're speaking for has to confirm that before the.
Right.
Email to the right services, which, which sort of works.
Yeah, I like that.
And it should be, that should be formalized though, I really think.
Okay.
And, and then Counsel Broadhead's point is an excellent one. If you, if you've chosen someone to speak for you, you've given up your right to speak for themselves.
Yeah.
Obviously, right? Because I mean, what's the point of having someone that for your, as your speaker?
Yeah, I do like that. So we called it an agent or something. Yeah. Because when we had the 22 St. Thomas presentation, so that was not a public hearing. That person should have probably been only given five minutes, but agenda planning, we talked about it. It's either one guy gets five minutes or 15 of them are asked for five minutes. One guy gets 10. Uh, but. Hope we Fontaine showed up is they presented themselves as speaking on behalf of 22 St. Thomas, sorry, their condo. He's like, they don't represent me. So I think it's really important.
Yeah.
They actually get people to sign off that they're speaking on behalf of. So that's a good point, Wes. Okay.
Yep.
All right.
So if I may, the next one, 10, I, I know we're starting to run out of the, a lot of time here, but that's one, the next one is one that's really, I have to say, I'll speak on behalf of all alleged officers. They, they tear their hair out over this, right? Like they, are we gonna have rules or are we not? Are we gonna bend the rules if someone, you know, gives you a written material five minutes after the deadline, 10 minutes after? I mean, but our, our preference certainly would be, you know, if something comes in beyond a, a, a hard deadline and that hard deadline should be, you know, at least 24 hours before the meeting, nobody gets it. Council members do not see it if they're too late. Because then if you see it and the public doesn't, how is that fair to the public?
Okay.
So that's, that's our recommend.
I like it. So there's two situations. If someone is presenting on something not on the agenda, after register, by when?
Okay.
Open noon.
Four o'clock noon, didn't it?
Yeah.
This question was, was, sorry, am I ringing in my ears? Talking specifically about public hearings.
Or just.
Uh, which is where, where you have to be really careful, right? Because you don't.
Okay.
You want to.
Didn't realize it was just.
Public, if it's a public hearing, they need to see every council seat.
Okay, absolutely.
There's hands up.
Uh, Sheena, then Natalie.
I think Natalie was first because she popped on my screen.
Okay, go Natalie.
But.
Um, yeah, I, so I, I'm okay with making the change with the understanding that council is often CC'd on these emails to ledge. So I, I know that the ideal situation would, would be that council has never seen it. Um, but in a lot of cases we have, and I, I, I don't know if we need a mechanism to um, you know, add those to the public record at some point. Or, you know, does council just need to like not look at their email for a day before? I, I'm not sure how, how we would address that.
So if, if I may, this, this, this is again, something I think should be put in the code of conduct by law. And it's actually on my list is some, one thing to propose. Um, you've probably all heard TV shows where the judge will say to the jury, the jury will disregard that last comment.
Right, yeah.
You can't, you can't really say that. You've heard it, right? You can't unring the bell. But what you can do is say, I will, it will be no part of my decision-making, right? Okay, so I've seen an email. It shouldn't have been sent to me. It was. I mean, I'm obviously not gonna ignore an email from a member of the public. I'm, I'm an elected representative, but it's not gonna form part of my decision. And we could, we could build into the code of conduct. The councils will be diligent in making sure that material that arrives late, although it may be red, will form no part of your decision-making. Could do that. That's a way to deal with it.
But you could try it, David, but the problem is sometimes it's not about the content, it's about the volume.
Oh, yeah.
Right? So if you, if you're receiving 100 emails saying, don't do this, this amendment, whether they're, whether it's NIMBY, whether it's whatever, it's just this volume. So you should honestly try not to read. If you open it up and say, this is regarding public hearing, blah, 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 just shut it. But that's hard. Sheena.
Yeah, I mean, the, that's the challenge I'm looking at is you can say, okay, well, it's not going to be put in our official package, but you don't know when it has just sent to all council, what the topic is. It just has like no reply. I can't tell what it is. And you can say it's not going to form part of your opinion, but it's still going to have an impact on you. And to say that it's not going to would be just ignoring reality, you know, like you, that's why lawyers bring it forward and say it and they go disregard last comment. He's like, I already know it's in their brain and it doesn't matter what the judge says. We, they know it will have an impact on the jury, which is why they do it that way. So, I mean, we can say, we can try, but the reality is just going to be the reality. And it's gonna, things are gonna come in after the deadline. We're gonna have to end up reading them or opening them. And even if you say, okay, I see it, it's gonna go down, it's still gonna have an impact. So we have just kind of faced reality in that we can't actually control the bottleneck just because we'd like to, because it's just the way people communicate today. Um, and if they didn't, even if they didn't send it as an email, they could send it as like a direct tweet. They could send it as other methods to get it out there, which you wouldn't necessarily be able to avoid. Or someone approaches you last minute and just talks to you because they run into you in superstore. And then they say something and you can't be like, I don't want to talk to you. And you can still say, I don't want to, but you still had the impact of them coming to talk to you. So um, you know, it's difficult to see, you can say your intention, but you also have to face the reality of, of the impact of what's gonna happen.
So we're kind of bleeding into the next section. So.
Yeah. So anyway, I'm just saying that the goal here may not be met regardless of the intention of how, how it helps the legislative services.
Okay, so for the first part about the written, yes. So I think you've got some consensus. Actually, I think you have unanimous about for public hearings, it needs to be written by a certain date. So I can go on the website for the rest of the public to see. The second question you're asking about, um, could, you could address when you hear people in safe way or, or emails or tweets, um, instead of giving council members quite clear direction on their scope of permissible discussion outside the meeting when a public, but that's when a public hearing is adjourned.
Yeah, that's, that's a very unique situation.
But honestly, I, I find even if, if we've done first reading of the public hearing, between then and, and the opening of the public hearing, I try to avoid all contact with the subject because I want it to be in public, right? Thoughts? I know it's not in the MGA, but that's just my practice. So, but you were talking about just the adjournment piece.
I, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to, I have to confess something. In the last five minutes or something, something's going wrong with my hearing.
Oh, really?
I've almost lost my hearing. I don't know why, if it's something in this room, but.
Do you want to move maybe over here?
Or is that maybe, are you all right? Maybe, maybe you should, are you sure you're okay?
I'm feeling fine in every other respect. I just can't hear anything.
Huh.
I can see your lips moving, but I can't hear a thing.
You're like my wife then. We are, we're married. The, I, I'm worried about your health. I'm really worried about your health. We should, yeah, that, Carrie, he's having trouble.
Yeah.
I don't even, do you think it's, do you think it's something like that or is it physical?
Yeah. David, why don't you try sitting here?
I'm just worried about your health, David. Are you still having a hard time? Can you hear?
Really?
Are you?
Yep, I just can't hear a thing.
Is this better?
I can hear a little better. Yeah.
Do you want Marta to sit?
Want to take a break? Let's just take a 10-minute break. Take a 10-minute break.
I'll ask Marta.
We're gonna take a break. Take a 10-minute break.
No, I, I can still, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna fall over. I just can't hear.
We have a process where if you're where you want an agent and we would keep that probably in the new procedure by law appendix for public hearings, but this is for all other meetings.
And and we're talking about not council members speaking time limits. We're talking about residents or interested parties addressing council.
Okay Wes.
Yeah, that I don't have much to add to what Natalie said. I think our current process is good. I recognize that it's difficult being the the mayor in the chair. You do a good job at it though, Mayor. So I think we should just hang in there.
Think that what's changed in the last several was because we're zooming with the zoom screen on the big screen instead of we used to have just a regular screen and it would be a big timer on both sides of the room. But now I think it's only on one side and they can't see it. And you and I, we even had a discussion about the little bell the other day. I think the bell's important. Anything we could do to get the public to understand that they are in their last thirty seconds, maybe a light. So is this might not be a procedure by law thing, but if we could have something technology wise up at the up at the microphone. But red light, yellow light, or green, yellow, red. When it gets to the conversation about how long counsel can talk. I noticed in Edmonton that they actually in their committee room, they might have it in chambers too, but in their committee room it's green and then it goes yellow when they have thirty seconds and then it's cut their mic off. Can you cut their mic off Sean?
Yeah.
When we did the public hearing for Bujor, I didn't want to actually put that on ledge services shoulders because it's it's so could I get that power to mute?
So it's an auxiliary microphone. I'd actually have to flip the switch down, physically turn that podium off.
Yeah. Okay, so I can't do it.
No, they'll move it.
Okay. Not not with Ray. But that for procedure pilot purposes, five minutes is good.
That's standard across the across the region too.
And I assume when somebody registers to speak, they get a bit of an email explaining all their their requirements, like they submit any written materials by this date and you only have five minutes. All right, we'll put a big sign up at the microphone too. Remember you only have five minutes. All right. Where are we? Twelve. Yeah. No, that's that we just did twelve, sorry. Under the current procedure, but almost any ruling a chair can be challenged and can be reversed by simple majority vote. Should there be a specific list in the bylaw? Of the types of chair rulings that can or cannot be challenged and is a council okay with simple majority being sufficient. Okay. I have never even thought of this, so comments?
I've just never come off.
Natalie.
Um, I I'm happy with simple majority, but I just want to comment that I loved that table in Red Deer's by law that was, you know, motions for dummies. That was fantastic and. Situation.
Okay. Be great for a new counselor. So I'm seeing no burning desire to change this, Marta. So.
Okay.
Keep it as is.
Did like the what the tables from the Red Deer by law. Likes the plain language of it and how simple it is to read, but also those tables specifically. So I'm sure he'll put it in the.
I think in general, we haven't actually asked the question, but are we looking for a new by law? And I think that's what I'm hearing from everybody, especially if we can make it much simpler like Red Deer's, but.
I think they did miss by law that was good in ours, the time limits and stuff.
Okay, I think we will. We'll make sure that's all in there. If Quorum, yeah, if Quorum is not present at this scheduled start time of meeting, how long should the by law require chair to wait before declaring the meeting adjourned? Similarly, if Quorum has lost for any reason during the meeting should count. Okay.
So when I did a scan on that, actually, we were the only one that really were silent on them on that. Most most of them were fifteen minutes or thirty. And I mean, I'm fine with I'm fine with fifteen minutes. I mean, I think I think we should put a timeframe on that. Then we're consistent across the way. And that's my own personal opinion. I mean, that's the way I've always ran a meeting was with a with a. Time limit. I mean, and and most of us will know you would have that knowledge. So for example, today I got a pre warning that you were going to be a little late. If other people are running late, that's just really up to that if I let the mayor or the committee chair or alleged services know that you're going to be late and that. And that would suffice because then you have that information and you would just hold it off. But I just think we should have a timeframe and like. Everything I read was either thirty minutes or fifteen minutes. I I can't see why would I wait thirty minutes if I'm not gonna have anything there. So fifteen was good for me.
Fifteen's good for me. Yep. Fifteen good for you guys?
Done.
Done.
Okay, Natalie's a yes. Okay. And I but I don't. Once in my twelve years on council, has it ever even come close to happening? So. Should the procedure by law prescribe the standard and specific word formula through the chair? To be used when administration, I'm not even going to talk about this one. Opinions? Do you want this formal? I find that we do it anyway, don't we?
Well, it's more for administration. I I've never said, well, I'll say. You know, one thing I wanted to say though is I I don't say madam mayor because I don't say Mr. Mayor. So like I don't put a gender in front of who's the chair or the mayor.
That's why I say you worship.
Yeah, so it's because I don't put a gender there. So I I find if we say madam mayor, I don't say Mr. Deputy Mayor if Wes or Mike are there. So why would I say madam mayor?
If it's Wes, you just say, hey, Mayor?
I just say, hey, Wes. No, no, I don't do that. But for decorum purposes, I I mean. I know that's tradition and that might have been in Robert's rules or other things, but I. Your worship or her worship, your worship is fine, but I but I find that sometimes when we're having those discussions and it's administration or it's. Somebody representing an industry that's, I don't have a problem with decorum, but I I just think it's, I just think sometimes it's just easier to respond like let's drop the. Some of the through the chair because in reality they're not speak there. They're not, you know, through the chair to councillor Mackay or through the chair to councillor Bransky like. There's five seconds you're not gonna ever get back. You know, so so why, why, why?
I I'm going to encourage you guys all to think about this, not with our current council, but maybe going into the future. Because as David said at the beginning, a lot of stuff we do is just based on tradition and I adopted a lot of Nolan's things, but I think it was even more formal when Nolan was here. Do you remember? It was more formal. Yeah. And I sometimes feel I'm a little slack. I I I try to catch myself when I say, hey, shall I meet councillor Bransky? I could try to. I think it's respect for the fact that you've you've earned this position sitting in council and you should be called councillor Bransky and those kind of things. So. I but I don't I I don't really have a wording.
That's different than that's different than what I said. I would, I I would say Mayor Heron or councillor Bransky, I I I would maintain that, but I don't see. Through the chair to councillor Bransky. I think that's just wasting time.
Or through the chair to.
Through the chair to Mr. Hiltz. Yeah, no, I but I.
There the mayor or the, you know, I don't.
Either way, they're interchangeable. They're fine. Wes.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I I just think that we're an elected body of council and and there needs to be a certain level of. Of decorum and and. Formality. I mean, it doesn't have to be overburdened some. And so perhaps madam mayor or Mr. Mayor, I called Noel and Mr. Mayor all the time, but. You know, it could be Mayor Kraus or or Mayor Heron would, but I but I think there's a there's a. There's a role that we play and and when we add a certain level of of formality to it, it brings a a sense of. You know, gravitas, if you will, to the to the proceedings and and it and it honors not only the history of St. Albert, but the. But the council in which we sit. So I'd hate to get rid of 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 all of it. I think we can streamline it so that it's less cumbersome. But yeah, I'd hate to go to first names. It it just would.
Don't know. I appreciate that.
Mr. Cuff would agree with you, Council Broadhead. I'm going to stick my comments. I'm just going to stick to the question, not kind of the other stuff. Through the chair, I don't think is required. That's it.
Yeah, okay, good. Thanks.
Okay, I'm fine with either way. I do. I do think so because this council and even last council had a fair amount of respect for each other and got along quite well. But if you have a council that's that starts fighting or there's it's not that. That relationship isn't there. You need you a hundred percent need that level of decorum in chambers to have a. A meeting run smoothly to avoid people interrupting you, to avoid people speaking out of turn, those kind of things. So. Some level of formality is required.
I agree.
Yeah, one comment. If someone has a point of order. I'm I'm understanding it should go to the mayor rather than to the person in the room.
Yes.
I would like to see that, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Point of privilege and point of order.
Yeah.
Those I wouldn't see those.
Okay. Under the current by law, the chair must relinquish chair duties to another member in order to make a motion. Do councillors feel this is important? Uh, I still think it's important to relinquish the chair. Is then you're ruling on your own motion, right?
Yeah, no, agreed.
And then last one that they gave us is they're in the interest. In adding a language to limit how many times or for what length of time an individual counselor may speak in any one item of business. So this is a big question because. There's so many municipalities that actually only limit one round of questions or maybe two by vote of council and. Five minutes a question. So I'm glad we're actually have this conversation because I think. I honestly think there should be some time limits and rounds of questions too, because it spreads it out over council. Meaning that everybody has a turn to speak. Because if someone is dominating for twenty minutes worth of questions and the rest of them might have similar questions, but they didn't get a chance to ask them in their own way. So. And it also forces people to be a little bit more concise on their questioning. So I'm open to thoughts.
I'll start.
Go ahead.
I'll start then. I mean, I think this is will be challenging. I I was interested in Red Deer's one where they said limit our maximum of ten minutes, section fifty six of their by law. Because I mean, that requires that services to actually have a timer, like how would you time because that's total of ten minutes, whether it's a, so I found that one really interesting to know.
Edmonton only has five.
Yeah, but but Edmonton has five, but you can vote on a second round.
Right.
Go on and another round.
Yeah.
So I mean, I mean, if we're going to get into questions, I mean, I've seen that Fort Saskatchewan does it that way where everybody. You go around as the mayor would go around and say, okay, whose turn is it first? And then go councillor Mackay. Any questions and you can wave that or pass it on to the next person. And that does allow for more involvement and allow, because sometimes I do like if I get on there first, I will ask all my questions. And then I know that other people are either ticking them off or not, but at the same time. One person necessarily dominates dominates the question period. So. I mean, I guess I have no issues with if we if we were to do that where we limit five minutes, then I think. I believe that there's, we should allow everybody an opportunity to speak and if you have no more questions, you can say, no, I have no questions. And it was the next person. I just don't know procedurally how that's done. I mean, I know it is being done, so I know there's a way, but I I'm not familiar with that. So. You know, and if and if we say we can have two rounds of those questions, I mean, that gives everybody ample opportunity to ask questions. And and it spreads it around as well.
Yep. I go two rounds and vote on the third round.
Yeah, something like that.
What what you want to make sure is is that. Every individual counselor is given the full opportunity to ask their questions so that they have all the information they need to vote, right? You never want to cut off that because if then I'm just saying, I don't know, but I've been able to ask my questions. That's not fair. So I wouldn't want that, but I do like the the. The five limit, five minute limit and then do several rounds if we need to. I think I have Wes and Natalie then Mike.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I. I, yeah, I I to sort of support a a distribution of time, which is what I saw. Section fifty six that was referenced by councillor Mackay. I the 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 challenge with the way that Red Deer has section fifty six written. To me at least was the time taken by other speakers and responding to the mayor's question shall not be counted in calculating. Fine. I I don't know how that's managed. So. Yeah, so I think that needs to be tightened up. I I like the idea of a ten minute. The other question is is that it says here, a member shall not speak on any agenda item for longer than ten minutes. We are assuming that's the question period. Are we saying that's questions or what about when we entered a debate? So if you have opening and closing, you know, the the person moving the motion opens and then they have an opportunity to close. What is that? I think there needs to be some, a little bit more language around that to clarify what's going on. I remember Len Bracco could could. For for long periods of time on debate. Is that what we're talking about here? Or is this the question period?
Okay, that's a good point. So Wes, let's um, let's finish. The questionings part of of an agenda item and then we'll do a whole separate conversation on debate. We did have this conversation about debate times last term, I believe, and. We didn't go there and everybody promised they would be able to keep their debate arguments under five and that has not been the case. So I think we should have that conversation again. But for right now. For questions, so if Red Deer says the time that the staff member is responding does not count, that that does provide some logistic problems. So it's for me, it's like five minutes, but not counting staff responses or ten minutes and you count staff responses, right? Edmonton is five minutes with staff like and and I I was sitting there for the transit one, you remember that Wes and. One of the councillors had to be really rude to the to the presenter saying, wrap it up. I got more questions. So.
Well, and and the challenge of five minutes is is that. It's a strategy, quite honestly, to 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 extend your. Response like I mean, if you don't want to answer any questions in Edmonton, all you have to do is give a five minute answer. And and I'm not sure.
So.
No. So I think it's either five minutes and you include. Or so you don't include the response or ten minutes and you do include just for like, because it might be easier. And then if they still have more, you get the second round, right?
Fair enough.
Natalie.
I mean, I have a mild preference for the ten minutes, including staff answer. I think really would make members of council. Kind of prepare and be concise. I think one of the struggles that we get into is with unlimited time, we get into debate.
Yep.
Every single time or even debating staff not liking the answers they give, we tend to stretch it out a little bit more. So I'm in favor of the. You know, ten minutes with staff answers and I think it's okay saying, okay, thank you. You've answered my question next. You know, keeping everyone concise is great.
Awesome. Thanks, Ellen. Mike.
Sorry, I just take a second to unmute my phone here every time to speak. I like the five minute. Round, you know, and then rolling pushing it to the next person. I'd like to see it just five minutes of of questions. I think staff has, you know, done huge jobs in preparing very complex. Agenda reports and and to limit. My my time to ask questions. I'm not going to ask them endlessly and I'm certainly not going to repeat them, but I I think we get a clear answer. So so that it's clear in my head, not I'm not saying it's clear coming from administration, but it's so it's clear that it's in my head. So I know how to vote.
I'm not talking about ever cutting off that. That's why you do multiple rounds. Yeah.
Yeah. So I I like the multiple rounds and. You know, but I heard somebody say, well, only two rounds, but I I would like to see it certainly say that we can have multiple rounds and. And allow us to get the full information so that we can make an informed vote.
Yeah, sure. I think we said two rounds and then you vote as a council to go on to the third or fourth round, those kind of things. It also forces you to read your agenda package. Don't ask questions that are in the agenda.
I think I think you know what I read. I read the agenda.
Read this one and last one and the year before.
Sheena.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I I'm fine if you want to do like a ten minutes on per round or something just to get done because I know sometimes I'll. Ask some questions. I'm like, oh, some of the people came up and I don't want to take up their opportunity to also have some time to ask. But I don't really like the idea of having to vote on the third or fourth round because other some people may have serious concerns about something and other people may not. And we need to respect everyone's opinion in this. So I think that just saying, you know, at the ten minute mark or something or somewhere near that, Kathy, you can say, hey. You know, we've gone past ten minutes or you're at ten minutes. Can we'll let someone else ask and you've done that before when someone goes long, including myself. And then that way we just keep the the momentum going and that makes sense, but I just I feel uncomfortable about the idea of saying. Two rounds and then the council has to agree that they think there needs to be more questions because if someone has a question. And they, because sometimes a question comes up from someone else's question, like there's been more than one time where Ken, you'll ask on something and then they ask it and I'm like, okay, now I've got a question based on what your response was to Ken. So that 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 kind of thing or anyone else for that matter, it's been it's prompted another round of questions where you're like, wait a minute now. That's something else to spur my mind. And so I think that. You know, we're actually going to extend the meeting longer if we keep having rounds of votes about whether or not we can continue to ask questions. Typically, we only ask extended questions when there is something of importance, like extreme importance or controversy where we're really trying to get to some to the bottom of something. So. I think that saying five or ten minutes and then moving on would make sense, but then not limiting how many rounds happen, just so that we allow the the momentum to continue. So. That's kind of where I would say if you want to go there, I mean, that's kind of if there could also just be an unwritten rule, Kathy, where you say. Or Mayor Heron, whenever you, I I like to play Mayor Heron and not Madam Mayor.
We're in Cal. We're in Cal, so you can call me about my first name.
Whatever you want. Okay. But anyway, I think that. That that's come something that, you know, it can be something where. To you, how do you want to enforce it, the meeting yourself, whether it has to be a specific rule or as the chair, you just simply say, this is how I'm planning to do it. But and also I don't, I don't think we should be making decisions on future councils. The next council will make their decisions on how they want to the procedure by law. So in the event that they say, okay, there's been animosity or something, we need to correct it. If we need to correct it for this council, let's do it. And let the other councils worry about how they're going to manage themselves instead of sort of trying to worry about. Like Len Bracco, I guarantee will not be entering debate. So, you know, so let's not worry about how Len's going to, Len Bracco's going to debate. Let's worry about how the seven of us are going to debate. So that's it.
Natalie.
Yeah, just to kind of respond to those comments, I I'd be hesitant not to vote on the, you know, the additional rounds of questions. Because I think that would negate the. Kind of the the purpose to ensure that we're concise, to ensure that we're not asking questions that are already answered in the agenda package. And I I agree with your point that we should should. Make a procedure by law that works for this particular council. And I think this particular council would absolutely vote to. Extend questions if, you know, if it was a productive conversation, that that absolutely happens sometimes. And and I think the risk of without that vote, we again fall into that trap of entering into debate in questions or. Not having concise questions prepared or not asking precise questions. So. You know, it goes to that Toastmasters kind of mentality where you need to get to your point. So so it's really clear what we're discussing and not go outside of that. Those are my thoughts on that.
I think one thing, Marta, if it was, if we voted on a third round, for example, it would have to be a debatable vote. So that councillor that wants to ask more questions can explain why. But. For sure. If if that's where we go, it needs to be debatable. Okay, so I think we're good there. So I see no more hands up, but let's address Wes's question about the length of time for debate. So do you want to kick that off, Wes?
Well, I just want to, yeah, I just wanted clarity around whether the ten minutes. Actually, how that played out in the in the debate portion. Sometimes. You know, you have a lot to say and I'm not sure whether ten minutes is adequate for debate. I I wouldn't want you to be able to go on for hour. But. But I'm just not sure ten is adequate for debate. I, you know, I'm open to whatever council has to say on that. Maybe we need to be tight in our summations, but. Anyway, that was the clarity yours requesting.
Any thoughts, anyone? I was going to say five, but I could go with ten.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I I see most of, you should be able to say it in ten minutes.
I I have, I was, I went back. Last year and and there was probably only one time when we were when one one councillor got close to ten minutes.
You went and timed them for four years of debate?
Not four years, one, a couple of. And I mean, it was simple, but I think that ten minutes is long, 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 long. I mean. But I mean, and honestly, it's still open to you. You're not at. At nine minutes, you're gonna, you know, you're gonna be saying, okay, you know, we'll have the the. You, there should be a timer up there or something that would identify if we were getting closer. You could, you as as the chair of the meeting, you could easily. Tell them their ten minutes was up, but I I honestly never found anybody even came close to ten minutes other than one time.
Does Red Deer's address this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Red Deer's has ten minutes total for everything, events, making motions and debate total.
Wow.
I know. That's why I said, I don't know how you can do that.
Our our last council meeting was eight hours. I think it's just getting a little bit too long. So that's why we're trying to put some conciseness to it. So. I was okay with five minutes with debates, but if I'm hearing ten, Natalie, so I saw you hand up.
I'm I'm very much in the five minute mark, you know, if if you're not able to say in five minutes. What you need to say, when there's already been great discussion at committee and kind of questions answered. I I I just don't know what's happening there if if we need, and I've I've absolutely gone over the five minutes, but but I think that's on me. That's because I need to be better at. Being concise in my debate comments. If you have like a list of things that you want to talk about. Then then you. You know, it can be done in five minutes. You know, I I would also, and this is, I don't think this belongs in the procedure by law, but. You know, really recognizing that debate is meant to kind of convince other people. Not as a speech. And and.
Yeah.
That that isn't going to convince anybody. So I I would, I I think it's important to to consider that when we are. Speaking in that context, you know, an hour and fifteen minutes of debate debate for one motion would be. Hard to sit through. Yeah, so I'm five minutes hard cut off. I I think that's absolutely sufficient and yeah.
I'll go Sheena, but Meredith, why don't we draft it with. With like a question mark, maybe put ten and we can, someone when it comes to council could amend it to five or or vice versa. Yeah. We don't actually have to decide on five or ten today. Gina.
Um, I had a question for ten. So because you did this checking, like, so obviously over ten was rare. What was the most common maximum that was happening under normal circumstances, like.
Five minutes.
Five was really it.
Five, five minutes. Most, most everybody got it within five. And to be, to be. Fair, I wasn't had, didn't have a stopwatch on them all. I mean, it was, but I mean, it was. I mean, there were some that got to be a little longer, six minutes, but it depended on the topic. So maybe even a little longer in one case, but. The majority were well within five minutes. I mean, I'm I'm bad too, because like I'll start.
I mean, I'm, I'm bad too, because like I'll start and then I'll go squirrel and
I go like this to you.
Yeah, yeah, the mayor sits there and wraps it up, but five minutes seem to be easily accomplished.
Because what I'm suggesting perhaps is we don't have to keep going in five or increments. You could say something like eight. And that way there's a little bit of latitude if someone goes over to six or something or seven. So, I mean, you could do instead of doing a five or 10, we could do something like an eight minutes. So we know that it was kept up. I don't think that anyone's trying to talk eight minutes just because it's available to them. I know that I try to shut up as soon as I finish having my points. So I'm tired of hearing my own voice on a good day. So I, that's, I guess that's what I'm thinking is, you know, we, we can kind of perhaps split the difference and see if we're actually going to be putting a timer in place. That's going on, but also just to go back to that question thing, I I don't think we ever want to say that we, we're going to limit people to do two rounds because what if they require more information to make a decision? And I mean, I've heard like Ken, like, you know, you'll say, I need more information when you're doing this. And that's even allowing, allowing unlimited questioning right now. So I don't want to be in a situation where someone said, I, I wasn't able to make a complete decision because we were cut off on questions and the council decided they didn't need any more questions asked. So that's the, that's real danger that we're putting in here is not only are we limiting time, but now we're also limiting rounds unless other people agree with it. And that's going to be a slippery slope that we're going down pretty quickly. So just keep that in mind. But I mean, if you want to put limits and why don't we just say something like eight and then that prevents rambling. And without having to, we recognize the fact that no one really wants to go over if they don't have to. And that you, the longer you go, the more you risk losing everyone's attention. So and that's the risk that that personal counselor is taking if they choose to go long. So that's what I would suggest.
So I'm, we're not going to debate the time today, Marta, but we'll put in a time limit of something for debate and I'm looking forward to this even to see if it works. Because we've been traditionally just been allowed to go on forever. And I I know, sitting as the chair, I will hear members of council in debate repeat and repeat and repeat the same argument over and over again. This is going to force us to actually write down our arguments a little bit more and say, oh, I've checked that off. And if you don't feel like you're getting the nods around the room, you don't spin back to it, you just cut it down and like that's, that's what I find is if you don't feel like you're having favor, you, you continue on in a different path and that it doesn't change people's, Natalie said it well. It's not, it's not speaking about why you're in favor more often or trying to, it's trying to turn the opinion of of your colleagues to your opinion. It's not about the press and it's not about telling people things. It's about your colleagues at the, at the table. So it'll be fun to try this out for a little while. Okay, and then I think that was the end of the, the question questions. But Natalie, you wanted consent agenda. You want to talk about that one? Was that a cuff recommendation?
Yeah, there were two cuff recommendations about that we should only remove an item from consent agenda. If, if there's a majority vote of council and then which I'm, I don't really like that. I'm, I'm okay with us removing one at a time. And then another one of his recommendations was that IRs, we vote on whether administration kind of puts in the work to them and I'm, I'm supportive of that. With consent agenda, my other comment was that, you know, is there a need for the mayor to read out the motions? Because if there's not, I mean, it's in our package, people can read it, Gazette reads it. And and you know, speaking to your point about eight hour meetings, you know, if if we can shave off 10 minutes by not doing that, that that would be great. Yes, and then council inquiries, I'm wondering if it, it looks like other municipalities have kind of a template to use, a notice of motions and and council inquiries as a template. So this is what I'm asking, this is why I'm asking it, if if that's something that would be helpful to us just to streamline it for staff and to make sure that kind of we're, we're in the right lane.
Consent agenda, I would hesitate to make it a majority to pull it off consent because some people pull it off consent just to vote against it. Not, not for debate, but just to register their vote. So if there's something on the consent that they really dislike, then they're going to vote against the entire consent, even though they're in favor of the rest of it. So that, that, anyone else have any opinion on that one? Okay. IR, so, so IR, so currently, I think it says that the city manager it in our procedure by law? Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can step in and say that is an exceptional amount of work.
Right.
And we can change the time period.
Okay, so keep that in. I think that's important, but maybe there's, there should be an opportunity for a member of council to step in as, at the same time saying, that's not something I care about. Why do you want that information? It's going to take a lot of time. Right? Because sometimes the city manager might be hesitant to step in, so.
I know what other, like, my previous municipalities that I've worked for, what, what happens with IRs and notices and motions is it comes back at the next council meeting as just the motion. And then council debates if they want.
Every IR?
Every IR, every notice of motion both would come back and it's debated amongst council members to see then if it, if it's approved, then the administration puts the work in. If it's not approved by the majority of council, it stops. It's, you know, so it, it, that does because some of the, some of the notices, emotions or IRs are incredible amount of work and they don't really go anywhere.
Right, they don't.
So that's the, that's the question, like some of them are amazing amount of work.
And I like what Natalie said, so here's the question, but I want to know why you're asking that question. Are you planning on actually making some governance changes? Or is it just for your interest? Like, that's two totally different things, right? Or is it something that maybe if a staff member were just to call that resident, it would be fine too. Like, so the why behind the question is important too. Natalie?
Yeah, just to add to that, you know, just a conference information that the information isn't publicly available. And you know, our, our EAs could probably help out with that one. And I like the idea of a seconder for notices of motion, which is, I think, what a lot of municipalities do. And I'm going to use the example of my motion on green burials. So I brought forward a motion, or I gave notice of motion, staff did tons of work on it. And it, it hit council floor and it was disastrous. Nobody had any interest in even debating it.
I supported it.
No, I rewatched it yesterday. I rewatched it yesterday. And so that work of staff could have been avoided if I'd had, you know, a template saying this is my motion, this is the reason for my motion, and you know, Sheena is seconding it. Because then it already starts that discussion. It gives everyone a sense of the why. And I, so I think a, a template for both notices of motions and IRs, and then having that seconder for motions especially, it has value.
I like that. Counsel Hughes, Sheena, what am I doing?
I don't, I can hear you saying, Natalie, about your seconder, but like I didn't support the green burials, but if you had said I need a seconder for it, I wouldn't have stopped it from moving forward. So like, because I do just respect that if somebody really goes to the effort and they want to have a notice of motion, they want to debate this and make this public, that I'm going to respect their, their position as a counselor to want to bring that forward and have that debate. As opposed to saying, I need someone else to agree with it off the top, that this needs to come to debate. So that's the, that's the one thing. The other thing relating to the IRs, like, I'm not putting for a ton of IRs right now. You know, like, I'm just, I'm, I'm just like really very selective if I bring forward anything. Yeah, but I've also been in the position a long time, so I already have a lot of background information about things, so I don't need to ask as many questions in IR. I think that saying that we have to vote on every one of these really makes it difficult because if somebody already knows they don't want it, you could just say no out of the gate without actually getting the background information that may change their mind about it. So out of the gate, council may say, I don't want to have that information. I don't want that notice of motion. But you're almost voting on it before you get the information, then asking if you want the information, which to me just seems like counter what we actually want, which is an informed decision when we make a decision, not a a decision based on like the, the title doesn't seem good, I'm saying no, and not actually getting the opportunity to have more of a discussion about it prior to making a proper decision. So I think that that could really interfere with our ability to make really good decisions as personal counselors bring it forward. And I'm thinking that perhaps what we could have in as far as the IRs go is saying that someone's bringing forward an IR and that other counselors could question, as you're saying, Natalie, other counselors could question. It, what is brought forward to ask more information as to why you want it, which will then allow staff or other people to say, hey, do you know this has already been answered here? So there's no need to bring it forward. But that, I'm also expecting that to occur when the notice of motions put forward as an email, that staff could come forward at that time and say, hey, we already have the answer to this and you withdraw it before it's even brought forward as a formal council position. So if that's not happening, I think it should be allowed to happen. And if it's going further and they want to expand on it, that they just have it in there, that the other counselors can ask why this is happening or what, what specifically, what is the information that you're acquiring for? But that, we need to respect the fact that there could be back, there could be conversations after. Like I say, Mike brings something forward and we think, Mike, we can get this information another way. Or why are you doing it? You could have that conversation outside of a council meeting. And then have him again reconsider whether or not that's the right decision that he must have been forward at that time. So I, I, it's just, it's a difficult situation when we start limiting how or when people can ask information and how and when people can bring forward notices of motion. Even if it totally bombs, Natalie, I think it's still your right to bring it forward if you want to, without having to ask for someone else's permission to have that debate. So that's kind of, it's, it's still your right to have that, that question, you know? And I, and I think back to your motion about the conversion therapy. Out of the gate, I think many people were like, we don't need to do this. Like, this is just, just a genuine impression I got was, we don't need to do this. And yet, once we had the information, had the debate, it passed unanimously. So things could be cut off before they actually have the opportunity to have a proper discussion, if we, if we limit it that way. That's all.
Mayor, would you mind? So I guess for me, I think the seconder would be valuable because I don't, our staff are so busy. And and that's what it really comes down to for me. I don't want staff spending however many hours putting a backgrounder together for my motion. Or Mike's or yours or Wes's when it's not going to go anywhere. So I just throw that out there.
I think, I, I think what Carrie proposed answers both of what you guys just said. It, it, it would prevent the, the ones that are not going to go anywhere from being a quick vote. Yes or no? But and it would be incumbent on that counselor to say, this is important to me, please get it to the next step of having an admin backgrounder. Or you could even have council say, I really need that admin backgrounder to vote on this, but so, so is this written in the procedure by law in Beaumont?
Yeah.
Yeah. So could we maybe look at that, have a quick look at it and see what it says and then we, when this procedure by law comes?
I think Strathcona has the same thing as well.
Notices of motion, is that right?
Yeah, like notices of motion, yes. Yeah, and I think, yeah, and but basically the same thing to, to degree. But the, but I think Strathcona has it as well, that way.
Yeah, maybe. So, and I do like the idea of the seconder, by the way. And then for IRs, maybe we still have it that the CIO can, can, can say, we, and like a vote of council or a member of council can say, because that's not in there right now. So a member of council can ask for a vote on that IR as well. And then I just thought of something and I've lost it. I'm good. All right. Anything else?
Um, two really quick ones. One, I'd like to discuss before the org meeting in the fall, when our meetings start, how long they are. So I think this is the first kind of last term, we changed it and that was the first time that we didn't have an end time. So just to discuss that before the org meeting would be great. And then my other comment is about the nominating committee. So we haven't been following the rules in our procedure by law for middle of the year appointments. So I'm wondering if we could just add a provision in there saying whoever the council rep is can decide.
Thank you. Dawn keeps bringing it to me and I'm like, I don't know, ask the council rep. And then another one happens, she asks me and I'm like, I don't know, ask the council. So that would be awesome.
Yeah, I have a question for legal. In Red Deer's by law, they say that submissions from the public will appear on the agenda in the same format that they were received with, with no personal information redacted. And I just wanted to get Legal's thoughts on that because I, I think we redact information here.
Is that, sorry Natalie, oh, so Counsel Jolly, that's for the public hearings, right?
I think so.
But even public hearings, we redact their address and their email address.
I think we redact that, but not their name.
Yeah.
So I have to double check our FOIP.
Right.
Yeah.
The name, the name would come forward, you take away their email.
Necessary to leave in the address, how to contact them.
Probably not.
But the thing is that if we put in our bylaw that we do do that,
Yeah.
then you, you know, yeah, do do. And then you know, you don't have an expectation of privacy to that. And you can set up an email address that's like your other email address that you don't normally use, but I use this for submitting things to public hearings. That's not like a personal one. So I can, it's, it's kind of whatever you want to do. I think from a legal perspective, as long as it's in our bylaw and it says that's what we do, then it doesn't deviate. It's a public process. It doesn't really infringe on FOIP as far as I can tell.
Okay, thank you.
And back to IRs, and this does not need to go in procedure by law, but I would encourage all of us to use that section of the agenda when it says information request, notice of motion announcements. You ask your question to the city manager and the staff right in chambers. It doesn't have to be a written IR with a enormous amount of work and six people reading the answer and then it's submitted like that, that it's, some of these are simple. So I'm just encouraging you to ask real quick questions. Obviously, if Carrie doesn't know the answer, he'll, he'll ask it in IR format. And even if you give him a heads up, so I'm curious about this, I'm going to ask this question, make sure the right staff are in the room. And then it's, then, then, then we've cut down on a ton of time for staff. So yeah, that's what I would do. Wes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just before we leave this, this item, I, can we, can I just ask what the intent of ledge is in terms of going away now and putting together a a revised by law based on the Red Deer model? Because Red Deer has some things in it that, that our current bylaw doesn't have. Like requiring a seconder for the motion or in particular, the reconsideration of motions. They have a different procedure down there than we have here. I'm just wondering what their intent is.
Well, thank you for the question, Counsel Broadhead. David and I have discussed this and initially, when we were talking about this meeting specifically, we kind of said, let's take the bylaw from Red Deer as a template and plug in some of the St. Albert specific things and see if they like it. However, we kind of thought, well, no, let's take a step back. We don't want to be picking apart the words of this bylaw. It's there. I don't know what generally, we wanted a general sense of what you want. So specific things like reconsideration of motions, if I had to read David's mind right now, I would say he probably would not put that in. And he would take it out of the Red Deer bylaw because it's not a St. Albert tradition to do that. So when we talk about changing it for the St. Albert way, we would take some of those things out. Same with seconding motions. That's like a very archaic procedural thing you could put in your bylaw, but St. Albert doesn't do that. So we would take it out because it's not, there's not real value and we don't do it that way anyway. So it would just confuse things. So our intention would be to take the feedback from this meeting, you know, rewatch the tape however many times. Bring back a new procedure by law based on the Red Deer model. But with the comments we've heard today for sometime in September, so that we can have a new procedure by law in place for the org meeting, like day one of term, year or two of your term, for, so for years, two, three and four of the term, you would have a new procedure by law to use. Based on this feedback. And again, we would bring it in September so you could debate specifically, like, we don't like this section, we don't like that section. But hopefully, we've kind of made it something that in general is, is, is good. It just needs minor, minor amendments at that time.
Thank you for that.
The question that I had for legislative, through the mayor, sorry. For legislative is when you're looking at the Red Deer bylaw as a basis versus our current bylaw as a basis, I'm seeing that you're doing as many changes in the Red Deer one as you are in ours. So and there is language that's in the current bylaw that's not in the Red Deer that will still need to be there on what we've discussed today that, you know, everything we've discussed hasn't really changed our original bylaw all that much. Whereas there's enough going on in the Red Deer that you're going to have to change. So I'm not sure of the two, which is the best, the best one to be your basis. And then if you're using ours, just two notes here, page thirty one, twenty six, twelve, you've got Amber instead of Member as a On to your basis. And then if you're using ours, just two notes here, page thirty-one, twenty-six, twelve, you've got ember instead of member as a.
Public.
And then there's no.
Point of order. I can't hear Council Biermazki.
Oh, sorry. We're just looking at the time. That was my fault. Sorry.
Sorry. I'm just giving her some uh, spelling corrections in the bylaw here. And then page twenty-eight, twenty-three, ten is notions instead of motions and so on. And then the other comment I had was on page sixty-seven, having hate speech in the bylaw. I just wanted a little bit of discussion on that. I'm not sure why that's in there. So.
So is there? If I may.
Yep.
Um, when I was watching this meeting and taking the notes, my impression was that the, the Red Deer by law was a good template generally well-liked by the members of council to start as a. As a basis for rewriting the, the new procedure by law for St. Albert. Um, that was our intention was to take that by law then and, and um, amend it for, for what we need here. So if that's not the takeaway, please let me know now, generally, so we know. But that is our intention is to do that. Um, and then in terms of the hate.
Trying to find it.
Page sixty-seven.
There is no, it only goes to page thirty-three. Is it our bylaw or?
End of package. So that's page twenty-eight of their bylaw?
Of their bylaw.
Yeah.
Apologies. Okay.
I'm trying to find it on page sixty-seven. When I Google hate.
Okay.
Did you find?
Page sixty-six. So it's um, a. Item number five.
One page off.
One.
Yeah.
A hate speech. The clerk may withhold a public submission from council agenda if the clerk after, is that the one you were talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's for public hearing specifically. And um, I don't know what they've encountered in Red Deer, but. It would depend on, like, I, I kind of agree with leaving that in there because if there's something that is. hateful or hating, tending towards hate speech or, or um.
So subjective.
Well, not subjective, not really. If it, if it, if it would cross the line in terms of entering into the hate speech realm. Then the city ought not to publish that in any format, whether it's part of a public hearing agenda or not. Like, we shouldn't be publishing that, even though it's not our opinion. It's someone else's and we've added it to our package. We shouldn't be publishing that.
So is there, is there a criteria for you to identify hate speech? I guess is.
Yeah, that.
Well, it's a tough question. So you can't, I think it's more like leaving something in there generally like that, that says if legal opinion says.
Okay.
Provided to you and would outline, in this case, this is why we'd suggest you would have seen it. But it's not be to be considered.
Okay.
For not putting it in the package for the public to see.
Okay.
We, that gives the discretion to administration to do that. I've not encountered that in my eight years in St. Albert. But I kind of.
Does happen.
Having that.
Does happen.
I would agree that that was a good one to bring up. Anyone else disagree with keeping that in? Okay. Jim Moore?
Uh, there was one other question. It said in the inauguration, it was the clerk rather than the CEO and it was different in both bylaws. So I was wondering how we were going to leave that as well.
Who chairs the meeting from the beginning part?
Procedures. Yeah, yeah.
It would probably go with clerk.
Oh, you don't want the CEO to do it?
Well, dude, but I just think technically like, I think the, like, from a, from a procedural perspective, the clerk is probably.
Okay.
They should be the one setting off each of the committee meetings before the chair is appointed and all those things like that should actually be the clerk.
Yeah.
But.
I agree, but you could do it either way.
Yeah. Phil Hope used to do it when I was first like.
Yes.
Yeah. Who did it this one? Who?
David.
David did.
David.
Let's keep it as clerk.
I didn't even know what clerk was.
I know. David's the legislative officer.
I knew that.
Okay, he's a city clerk slash city solicitor, catch head of.
Gina.
Okay, so just um, to reiterate what, what Wes asked. So we're throwing away our current bylaw and then copying everything from Red Deer. And then just making a few changes based on this conversation and everything that we have discussed that's different, we're just going to assume is going to be better in Red Deer. Is that what we're doing?
That was my concern.
Instead of amending the old one, we're writing a new one using Red Deer as a bit of a template.
So everything that we haven't discussed that's different between Red Deer and St. Albert, we're just going to assume that they're right and we were wrong.
No, 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 not at all. Uh, uh, Marta just said on, for example, reconsideration of motions, no. But so they're going to go with what St. Albert traditionally does. They brought up the stuff that they wanted clarity on. Is that right?
Yes, and it is a difficult task. Um, as we had tried to prepare for this meeting, we realized there's a lot of things that they have in there that don't apply to us. So it will be removing, I think, quite a few things from their Red Deer bylaw. So it won't be the Red Deer bylaw exactly. But in terms of the template, we like the plain language. We like the appendices for referring to certain things in an appendix instead of in a section. Like just in terms of the formatting of it, that there are very specific St. Albert things. And it, it will be subjective to a degree on, on administration's part. When something um, comes, like, I don't think there will be anything that comes out of the procedure by law that we currently have that doesn't make it to the Red Deer by law. That won't be identified to you explicitly in the agenda report that comes forth in September. The intention is not to just take the Red Deer one and just change the name Red Deer and make it St. Albert and then just add the things we talked about today. It will be much more different than that. Just generally, we like the format of it and some of the ideas in it. And the ones we raised are the ones we really needed um, clarity on today.
I think Sheena and I are asking the same thing though, because we're both seeing stuff in the current bylaw that's not even mentioned in the Red Deer by law.
It would, it would.
It would stay then.
Yeah, for example, like we have a public hearing process. We talk about like, you can, you can get an, an agent to come act for you on your behalf. So we would kind of combine it with the Red Deer way, which says in the appendix, here's how you do all your public hearing stuff. So all the public hearing stuff will come out of our procedure by law into an appendix. And we will leave in all the specific things we have done in St. Albert and we will add some of the things we talked about today. Um, and then you'll be able to see it in September. Maybe we should bring it back earlier in September then, so you can make amendments, maybe bring it back another time again in September. Just so you can see what we've kind of created, crafted, but it will be a new one. And if you think we missed something, you will direct us to add it back in.
So when we say templates, that's a perfect example. Currently our public hearing is embedded. There is an appendix. It's not about the what's in the public hearing. It's just the template. Okay?
Okay, because I'm just, I'm thinking about the, the question thing as well. That should not be a limitation during public hearings. Is the, we can only ask ten minutes of questions for public hearings because that's the whole intention is to be able to exhaust all the questions. So just, just saying that, you know.
The script that, the script that David wrote for me exactly says that. We will exhaust questions. I think it says somewhere. So, yeah. All right, let's take a break. Um, lunch just got here. We have two and a half more hours. We're here till.
Two now, yeah, two thirty.
Um, I'm sorry that you guys couldn't hear, but Kerry was just whispering. We wanted to get going because you have a pretty big presentation, Diane.
Creeping.
Creeping.
An hour, one hour.
Probably lots of questions. So let's try to um, we'll take ten minutes to gather our lunches and we're going to have a working lunch. So you at home, make a PB and J and be back at your, uh, just whatever. Can you make craft dinner in ten minutes?
Taco balls.
I got stuff food in my mouth. They went back?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Okay, and Gina?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. You guys missed good taco solids here. I'm numbing. All right.
Hey, yours, Wes.
So now we're onto the long term. Heading for debt.
I feel like it's unfair. I feel like David and Martin, you just have all your guys' green energy. I even know the riveting talk.
No, we'll be good with this one. This is important.
Um, so just a little bit of an agenda. I think that's kind of what we put in your agenda package, just kind of is what we're going through. So we're going to look at some of the legislative and policy rules around debt. How St. Albert's used, um, debt historically, some of the current issues that we're going to be facing, um, in the next couple of years. Um, including some of the projects that are kind of on the slate that are potentially going to require that in order to head. Um. Impacts of those debts in terms of our policies and the council limits and all those things and, and some future strategy. So I did, I did my best smear hair to make this presentation not all text.
Thank you.
But this is the account I'm trying to put together.
That's good. I like it.
So, you know. Um, so there's two major components or definitions regarding debt, um, that you'll often hear referenced. So the term debt, of course, is used to describe the outstanding principal balance of any borrowings at a point in time. Debt servicing is the term used to describe the annual payment required on each borrowing, which includes both principal and interest. And that component is the, um, part that impacts the tax requisition. It's that total debt or principal and interest payment. So the MGA under debt regulation two five five slash two thousand restricts the municipalities' borrowings to one point five times its annual revenue and its annual debt servicing at point two five percent of annual revenue.
What's our revenue this year? Remember?
Like our actual debt limit?
No, like, so, so the, what you use for the calculation, this, this is operating revenue, isn't it?
It's, so it's, it's basically they take all your revenue, but then they exclude certain components. So they exclude the, um, the grants from the province.
Okay.
There's certain excluded revenues. I can get you the formula.
That's okay.
Every year when we do our financial statements, that's one of the things we have to calculate our debt limit for the following year in the auditor's audit app so that we know we have the right number that we're working with.
Okay.
Um, so basically that regulation is in place just to ensure that municipalities don't overextend their ability to pay. So council policy further restricts these overall maximums to eighty-five percent of the MGA weapons. And this is a prudent policy to ensure that capacity means available to deal. The policy further restricts the use of debt, uh, with a tax-supported debt limit of fifty percent of the internal level. So tax-supported debt is defined in the policy as debt that has been issued for capital expenditures from tax-supported operations. This debt is repeated, uh, using tax levy revenues. So then further, tax-levy revenues are defined as taking the overall budget expenses from the city, subtracting out all other sources of revenue, such as user fees, fines, grants, reserves. Basically, the amount that we levy to taxpayers through the tax rate by law. So the majority of debt taken on from municipalities for the construction of assets that ultimately.
Okay, I'm sorry, on that tax-supported side. So when we're servicing project number nine through offset levy reserve, that's not tax-supported, or is it?
Well, see, that's one of the, one of the conversations I want to have with the council. I'll be, I'll be honest with you. When I, when I first came to the city and I read this policy, I didn't understand what it meant.
Okay.
And I asked fifteen different people and I got fifteen different interpretations of what that meant. So that's part of the, part of the challenge. So what I've, what I've kind of done is I've kind of came, come up with my own interpretation of what that means. And I've been just trying to apply that consistently throughout all, all of the sessions, but it's worth us having a conversation, um, with council is to. And we'll get into the, the point of is, is having that limit at all? Does it, like, what are we trying to achieve with it? And is this the right way to achieve it? And if it is, can we somehow tighten up that definition or make it more clear language so that the average person reading it would understand what that means?
Yeah. So would, in your interpretation, did that, does that include the offset levy reserve?
No.
Mine too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah. So to say that only fifty percent of our debt can be funded by the taxpayer, it's very restrictive and it's going to limit council's ability to move forward with required and desired projects. Um, consideration should be given to either increasing the tax-supported value to something more reasonable, like seventy or eighty percent, or to refocus the section around the impact to the annual taxing. I think that's part of what, what is trying to be achieved through that. And I'm not sure that that particular limit is the best way to necessarily do it. My battery be running low. I'm plugged in. Wait on. Sorry.
As soon as Sean leaves.
Yeah, of course it is.
Is it on? Is the box, the thing?
Light? Now I got a light.
That up now?
Sorry, I thought it.
No problem.
Peanuts are hot.
I love them.
Okay, so council currently has a policy around how we manage our debt. So on the slide, you'll see three main purposes that are stated in the policy. And I highlighted in blue the key sections of these points. So again, it's a financing tool that allows us to meet current and future infrastructure challenges. Um, we want to be able to strategically mam- manage our borrowing and limit the impact that debt charges will have on future tax and utility rates. And I know that's an, that's an important issue for, for council as well. However, we always say that properly applied debt can be an affordable source of funding that complements the sustainability of an organization. So I always, always like to say that debt is not a four-letter word. But the key to debt financing is that it's used strategically and with a long-term plan. A properly functioning long-term debt plan with ventures cycling in and out on a regular basis, meaning that as new debt is required, an old debt is retiring, which mitigates or eliminates the tax increase. Issue we face right now is that due to a historical aversion to debt financing, we're facing the, for debt for critical projects without a lot of old debts retiring. And I'm happy to have anybody jump in. If you have questions, like, just jump in and there's a few spots where I'm looking for some feedback, but.
Let us know where those spots are.
I will. Yeah.
When's the next time there's debt retiring?
Uh, we do have a few debts coming up in the next couple of years. So we still have, um, a couple, two small or two service place ones. So our last service place one expires in twenty-five. I think we have one expiring in twenty-four and one expiring in twenty-five. And then we've got a couple of small ones left on regi- on the original regiven drive. And then we do also have a couple retiring because with, um, debt. Our second debenture that we took out was, was only a small, a small amount. Um, it was only two million dollars. We actually, we did it over three years. And same with the purchase of the fire hall lab. We actually only did that one, like typically we do our, our debentures over twenty years, but because they were smaller amounts, we did them over a shorter time. So the fire hall for debt for the, for the land, we only did over three years. So we'll have that one retiring too, but it's a, it's a small one. So kind of have limited impact.
One other question. If you ever sell anything, do you retire debt by that? Or is it always just carried on to something?
Always carry on. So the debt, um, and we have done the analytics on it, but with, when we borrow through over the treasury. We get the, the one advantage of borrowing through over the treasury is you lock in your debenture for the entire twenty years. So it's not like a mortgage where you have to refinance every five years. So if we get, you know, a good interest rate, we're, we're locked in for the full twenty years. But even in cases where, so, because we looked at this when, um, so we originally did regiven drive, interest rates were quite high. So I think some of our regiven drive original ones were at like nine percent or eight and a half percent. And so when we did get some additional money coming in, we did the analytics around, um, retiring those debts. But the penalties that they charge almost never make it worth their while, um, because they charge big PO penalties. They may have to do that in order to be able to offer those long-term locked-in type rates. Um, they, they don't want people getting out of them. So very, very seldom would it ever make sense to retire debt early.
Good. Okay.
Yeah.
We only use debt for infrastructure, right?
Yes.
We don't use debt for anything else. And the MGA doesn't allow us to use debt for anything else.
Yeah, you can use it for short-term operating. We do have an operating line of credit debt.
Okay.
Which we. To prove that right at the beginning here.
Yeah, yeah.
To get an increase in the meaning of COVID because I didn't really know what we were going to be facing. Um, so I think, I want to say we're at twenty million. We have a, an operating line of credit for twenty million. We've never used it. Um, but it's just a fail-safe path there for cash flow costs. So.
And. I, I believe, and I might be wrong, but I believe some municipalities took on debt and used their MSI money to service that debt annually.
Yeah, there's something to do.
Yeah, it's so, I don't know if that's changed that you're not allowed to do that anymore, but it's gotten them in trouble because they expect that MSI to service their debt and all of a sudden MSI went down on their screw.
Right. Uh, wasn't, I wasn't aware of that. Yeah, we're trying to do that. Um, so in this, so this slide basically highlights the amount undertaken by the city over the last twenty years. And provides a good visual of how far under the city is from both the municipal government limit as well as even the city's internal debt limit. So while on the surface, some would argue that the city's been fiscally responsible by severely restricting its use of debt, I'm going to challenge this notion a little bit today. So until very recent years, council has. So until very recent years, council has not moved many projects forward with the use of debt financing. In the 15 to 20 years prior to 2019, there were only two major projects funded through debt. Service Place for 38.8 million, debentures ranging, or expired from 205 to 225, and Rate Given Drive for 33.4 million from 2006 to 2020. So 2020 will be our last from the original Rate Given Drive. So over the years, projects have continually been delayed due to lack of approved funding. For example, Fire Hall 1 was originally scheduled for replacement 10 to 12 years ago. However, the cost of the project, obviously, it was a large-scale project. And alongside no approval for debt financing or not wanting to move forward with debt financing, the replacement continued to be delayed. This delay had the effect of both significantly increasing the maintenance and repair costs on the building as it continued to age. And as well, it created a situation where Fire Hall 1 replacement and the need to build Fire Hall 4 fell at the same time. So it kind of pushed those projects together. So due to the limited acquisition of debt in the past, the amount of debt that will be retiring does not align with the increased debt requirements to fund new projects. So what issues are we facing today? So several significant projects are on the radar over the next many years that will require debt financing to proceed. Several of these priorities, me, I'm just going to say me because we haven't done yet, but be included in council's strategic plan are among some of these significant projects. The city is facing large tax increases over the next several years excluding any impacts from debt. And as I had mentioned, there's limited previous debts retiring that could help offset that tax increase.
Diane.
Yeah.
Have we, have we done a, were you able to do kind of a comparative municipalities' environmental scan back, you know, four or five slides ago when you showed the bar chart of where our borrowing is? Like what, how do we compare to other like-sized municipalities?
I think we have the third lowest debt in the province. I'd have to go back and look at the numbers, but we are always around about the third lowest.
So out of 10 or out of any comparable or?
Yeah, I think it's around out of like the 17 what municipal affairs considers are comparables.
Okay.
And I can certainly look for that. There's a graph that municipal affairs produces that I can pull up and send to you. Is that comparison?
Yeah, that would be helpful.
In the, yeah, presentation. Presentation.
All right. So what issues are we facing today around off-site levy projects? So off-site levy projects have always been communicated as the financial responsibility of developers. While ultimately this is true, it's often the case that cash flow related to these typically large infrastructure projects does not. The way that off-site levies work is that we have a bit of a chicken and an egg situation. Developers need the infrastructure in place in order to develop. We need to develop so that we can collect their off-site levies to get the cash to build the infrastructure. So why is this only emerging as an issue now? So much of the off-site infrastructure that was constructed years ago was designed with excess capacity, which allows the city to continue to grow. We're at the stage where much of this excess capacity has been utilized and a whole new phase of infrastructure is required to support future development. So as an example, council is aware of and has just recently approved design funding for infrastructure in the Northeast. If this infrastructure is not built, not only will future developments in this area of the city need to be defaulted, but there's also risk to existing residents and businesses as the modeling of the current infrastructure shows it's functioning at over 100% capacity. So in order to resolve the chicken and egg scenario, it's most often required that one or more parties, either the developer or the city, is required to pay for these projects upfront. The process that we call front-ending. When a party frontends the cost of a piece of infrastructure, they're paid back. All these future parcels of land pursue development and contribute their off-site levies. This future development can take place over decades. So as was mentioned, these are typically very expensive projects. The benefiting areas of the infrastructure often involve many landowners and developers. It's becoming difficult for any one developer to front-end major pieces of infrastructure and then wait years to be reimbursed. It is also becoming increasingly difficult for developers to obtain financing for this type of construction. Just for interest sake, that's a picture of project nine. I needed a sewer pipe, so.
There you go.
So in this example, these four landowners will require a sanitary sewer pipe to be constructed through their lands. Picture of project nine. So each landowner benefits equally from the infrastructure. So the off-site levy rates are set, so then each landowner is responsible for 25% of actual costs. The problem occurs because landowner A is ready to develop today and will pay their off-site levy fees. The other three landowners do not intend to develop for many years and so are not yet required to pay the fee. So assuming this is a $20 million project, this is what creates the chicken and egg scenario. There's currently only $5 million available from landowner E to put towards this pipe. Problem is, you can't build 25% of a pipe. So given the size of the project and uncertainty around the timing of future development, it's challenging for landowner E to finance the entire 20 million and wait for reimbursement. It is in these situations where developers look to the city to front-end this infrastructure. So the emergent need for OSL front-ending is becoming more prominent, yet in general, it's not something that has been regularly discussed with council. Off-site levy projects and their corresponding costs are mostly derived from the utility and transportation master plans. And they're updated annually based on information and design work. Of course, council would be familiar. They would have just brought the new off-site levy bylaw in March with new rates and boss and all of those pieces. While administration works quite closely with the developers on these future projects, there's currently not a defined process for council to understand what the future requirements for front-ending debt might be. So administration created a prioritization matrix based on council policy PE 09 that would help inform a strategy around which projects the city should be looking to strategically front-end. Administration has been working closely with the developer working group to understand each other's priorities and define a common ground in deciding the order of OSL projects to be funded. This continues to be a work in progress. Large municipal projects likely to require debt financing and OSL projects are prioritized independently. And yet, from a debt perspective, we're working with one pot of money and ultimately one taxpayer. In the last couple of years, we've recommended proceeding with several projects like Rate Given Drive Twinning, North St. Albert Trail, the Range Road 260, servicing, and Fire Hall Number 4. While very important projects to move ahead with, we made these decisions in isolation of future needs and limitations. Although reality is not quite this simple, you can think of municipal capital projects as providing services to existing residents and OSL as preparing services for future residents. And there is a need to balance these priorities. Beyond the annual budget and council's four-year strategic plan, a debt strategy incorporating the needs of existing and future residents needs to span 20 to 30 years. We want to ensure that the debt decisions we make today don't hamstring the next five to seven councils. So what should be considered? So over the next several years, council will need to make decisions regarding which projects to move forward with debt financing. We want to ensure that council has all the information we need in order to make these strategic decisions. This includes things such as fully understanding the impacts and benefits of moving one project ahead of another, the impact on taxes, and the laddering of our debts and how that aligns with our debt policies. So all of our municipal growth capital projects as well as our off-site levy projects go through a robust prioritization process. Metrices have been developed that provide weighted scores for each project based on categories such as council priorities, safety and risk, service levels, term of investment, and other categories. For those projects that rank higher through these existing processes, it's recommended that the city develop principles to consider before recommending debt financing. So to that end, administration held a workshop with leadership team and some other key individuals, raised firm ideas, and do an initial evaluation on the relative weighting of each principle. Oh, I can't think it's on the side. Oh, yeah. I'm just going to highlight right there. So unfortunately, as you can see, Mike was home ill during the session. So Danielle agreed to walk him around with the laptop so that he could participate in the discussion. He reminded me of Sheldon, if you ever saw. Unfortunately, we ran out of time during that session, so we continued in a virtual format. And the participants have the opportunity to rank and weed some of the principles that were generated from the initial sessions. So on the slide is the list of principles that the group felt were relevant in order of importance. So applying this list of principles when considering debt financing provides an additional lens through which to make decisions. So this is one of the places I wanted to stop because I had kind of had some questions for council. So when you, when you look at these lists of principles, you know, it's sort of, did we get it right? Is there something on the list that you think is irrelevant to a decision on debt financing? Is there something we've missed? If so, what is it? Where does it belong, kind of in the weightings or rankings? And then the question of should a final agreed list of principles be embedded into the ultimate council debt policy? So I just kind of want to open up for discussion to see what you guys think of the principles that we came up with and did we miss anything?
All right, guys, it's your chance. So there's questions on the screen on your laptop. So any thoughts? Do you want to go then one at a time?
I have a couple.
Shelley, Natalie.
Okay, so say, you know, you're getting a turn from developer A, as you mentioned earlier. What would be the timeframe between B, C, D? Do you have that all projected? And what if, say, a developer went out of business, you know, like five years down the road or something like that? What's your backup plan for something like that?
So I know Donnie's on the line and she can potentially jump in, but I can just kind of go some high level as well. So we do have a very robust development, development model, and that's what the off-site levies are based on. So it basically estimates, you know, how many hectares of land in each area are planned to come on in a given year. In terms of a developer potentially going bankrupt or something like that, as soon as a developer, kind of get, I'll get Donnie to just verify as well. But as soon as they apply for their development permits, so they're obviously in business when they're applying for their permit, they have to pay their levies like right then. So we would collect their levies right, right at that moment. If something happened later on down the road, we would have already collected our money for those levies. But I'll let you, Donnie, if you wanted to jump on and maybe add to that a little bit.
Yeah, I think you're right. We collect the levies at the time of the DA application comes along. And then if the developer goes under after that, then whoever is the next owner of that land, we have to deal with for subsequent development requirements. So Tanya, just, you know, open her camera. As long as we have off-site levy discussion, it's Tanya on the call.
So we, like I said, we do predict annually what we expect to come on. But I know that when we're looking at debt financing, it's actually the financing model that predicts, like, says how much money we will be able to spend. I know that's on Diane's side. So that's usually the one that we use for safeguarding so that we can still make our debt servicing payments. I don't know if Diane, you want to speak more to that one because that's really the safeguard there. Because if, if one developer goes bankrupt, the land still isn't developed. And so typically, it would be developed, it would just remain as if it's not developed and we would collect those levies when a subsequent owner was to come in and develop. But it's only if we were to move forward with, the risk is that we move forward with financing a project and then development doesn't follow.
Yeah, so that's always the big risk with front-ending and off-site levy projects is, you know, we predict, you know, that development's going to come on and we're going to get paid back over the 20 years of the debenture as those things develop. If for whatever reason, you know, the economy tanked or something happened and nobody was developing, we'd still be on the hook for that debenture without getting those off. So it is a risk. But we do have a pretty robust policy. It's called the Offsite Levy Recovery Fund Policy. And in order for us, what we've gotten up to this point, and it's something I actually want to, still, I want to broach with council because it's one of those things where we first put this policy in place, we made it super conservative, like super, super conservative because it was something brand new we wanted to try and we wanted to have lots of safeguards behind it. So that policy right now has a restriction in it that if we take out debt financing, like we always have to make sure we have like three or four years' worth of debt payments in the bank so that if development starts slowing down, we've got time to figure out how we're going to deal with it. It's something we might want to look at, consider amending. It still needs to be conservative. I'm a conservative person. So it still needs to have some safeguards built into it, but you can be over-conservative as well and actually hamstring yourself for what you're trying to do. So I don't know. Does that, does that help answer your question?
Thank you.
I think Natalie's up next.
Thank you. I'm happy with the debt principles kind of that we've got here. And I also like kind of that we're being conservative, but not to the point where we can't move forward. I guess my only comment would be that, you know, there is a lot of fear around debt and what it means and how it benefits the city. So I really would just like to see good communications around it when, when we are using debt financing just so that there's a really kind of easy way to understand what we're doing and why we're doing it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Wes and, sorry, Ken and then Wes.
Sorry, Wes. Enables growth to proceed. Are we going to, I mean, growth can be anything. What about putting some parameters around growth? So I know at Edmonton, what they do is they say priority growth with long-term benefits. So like, so we don't get into that infrastructure debt problem that we found. So I mean, for example, Rate Given Drive or North St. Albert Trail or potentially the Fire Hall Number 1, that, so that there's priority given to larger products, projects with long-term benefits. Because I mean, I wouldn't, I mean, I guess there, I don't, when you just say enables growth to proceed, I just, what type of growth is it? Do we need to actually put some more descriptors around growth as my only option?
Yeah, we could. And I think that one of those ones, like the Northeast is a perfect example of that, right? Because if we, if we don't build that infrastructure, we have to stop development in that area. And we don't want to be in a place where we're having to make those decisions, especially not at the last minute, right? Be able to plan for that, but no, really good points. And I think really, you know, what I'd like, I guess, like to get out, information I'd like to get out to the public too is one of the, one of the best reasons why you would use long-term debt is that the very, actually, the second last piece on there about creating generational equity, right? Because when you, when you save money, if we wanted to just, you know, take our taxes in and put it in the bank and save it until we had enough money to build a project, it's all the past residents that paid for an entire project that all the future benefits residents are going to enjoy. So by spreading out debt payments over 20 years, even if somebody moves into the city five years from now, they're going to pay for, if it's a 20-year, say, a 20-year lifespan of a thing, they're going to pay for 15 years of that because they're going to get to use it. Right? So that's, that's one of the biggest benefits, in my opinion, is that it does create that generational equity, especially on those larger projects.
Can I, is there anywhere on there though that says use? I mean, sometimes we can leverage money from other levels of government that speeds up. So maybe in your prioritization, do we recognize that anywhere where although maybe a project isn't ranked as high, it qualifies for money that's not available for another project? Is there a way to capture that?
So it's interesting. So when we, we talk about the projects, so actually even the leadership team, we have a hard time focusing around principles of debt and not principles of prioritizing the project. Right? So we have, we have prioritization criteria for our municipal capital. And these groups has done a great prioritization tool for the off-site levy projects. So I guess one of the issues is, and it's, I guess, it's an interesting philosophical discussion. So, you know, you rank all of your projects. Some of them are obviously closer to the top or closer to the bottom. If you've got something closer to the bottom and the government comes up with a grant that says, we'll fund 50% of this project, right? If it's lower, if it's truly lower on your priority list, why would you put even a dollar towards it? When you can't fund some of the stuff that's at the top of your list? Just because there's potentially a grant available, if it's truly not a high priority of council, you probably don't want to put your other 50% of your money just because there happens to be money available.
Yeah, I guess it would.
But then you're losing cash.
No, but you're, but you're, but you're losing your own cash. Because now, so say you have a $100,000 project and the government says, I'll give you $50,000. Now you have to put $50,000 of your own cash into something that is.
I guess it would be.
That you could have put up.
It'd be a case by case physical party just because it's years away, but you're going to have to do it eventually. You would want to take that cash, right?
But yeah, or if it was like Lakeview, all of a sudden, we ended up saying, well, we can't really afford Lakeview and we're not going to do it. But you know what? The province is going to throw in or the federal government has got extra. So now all of a sudden, that might move it up the prioritization scale. I mean, I picked Lakeview because, but I think we do that anyways.
I can find our prioritization matrix doesn't consider whether there's money to do things. It prioritizes it based on safety, on council priority. It prioritizes it based on safety, on council priority. I don't, so whether money's available isn't going to change whether it's a priority. If it was a high priority project, it would have floated to the, to the near top of the list anyways. The problem is it's just then you have a funding line. So you can go so far down before you have to cut it off. So obviously if there's more money available and certainly the two things that literally just kind of missed the cutoff because you didn't have enough money, then absolutely put money towards it. But you're right. It is a case by case. Especially when there is extra. Ever want to, we never want to walk away from free money, like you said, but we just want to make sure that any contribution that we have to make towards it makes sense, right?
I'm thinking of Act of Territories Alberta, like that project is not ranked at all for us. Like it's low on our priority list, but because there's now provincial money and a, and a council motion too, but that's an example of something that you might not want to contribute to just because there's provincial money. But Fowler Road? Different. So those kinds of things. Yeah. So case by case. Wes and Mike, sorry.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, and thanks for those questions, Councilman Kai. And you, you sort of talked a little bit, Diana, around where I was going to go with this. There's, there's a couple of the principles here that, that, that if somebody in the public that wasn't sort of in tune with how we do business at the city, they wouldn't understand what is being said here, particularly around the generational equity thing. So your explanation of that helped a lot and, and would help other people because the, a lot of people sort of equate civic financing to their own particular situation. And so they, they want to save up and, and then so they sort of either eliminate or, or significantly reduce the debt costs that they have to incur. But in so doing that, if you apply that in the, in sort of the city circumstance, then to your point, local, uh, current residents are paying for uh, an asset that future residents are going to, uh, you know, not contribute, but, but certainly, uh, receive the benefit thereof. And I'm not sure that's, that's well understood within the community. And, and so there's a, there's a real hesitancy to take on debt because they think they're passing on this great debt load to their children and grandchildren. And, uh, you know, as a grandparent, I don't want to do that. But on the other hand, uh, there is a sense of around, there's, there is a equity issue. And those further on down the line need to carry their part of the load as well. So I, I appreciated your, your explanation. And, uh, and so when you throw these principles up on the screen, uh, and people are watching it, it's helpful to have those sort of explanations come out. So, and all my other questions were asked. Thanks.
My, my question was on the enabled growth to proceed. Was there any discussion around the prioritization of commercial slash industrial growth work versus residential growth? Because to me it seems we, we will be forced into just residential growth by developers wanting to do that, build houses. But our priority to get to a 70, 30 tax assessment. Hope I get the word right there, Diane. Versus, um, you know, and it, it goes back to that, that annexation land being 60, 40, you know, to, so that when it's mixed in with the 80, 20, we get to a balance of 70, 30. But to me, it, it, we, as a council, we really need to have some discussion around what would our priority be residential versus, uh, commercial? And to proceed with, with that growth. And the other one, I do like the whole discussion around generational equity. I think the explanation was great and, you know, more people need to understand that. Uh, and, and then on prioritization, if, if something was 10th on the list and got government money, I wouldn't expect that to jump up and take the place of something that's one or two on our list. But if it was something that, you know, one or two and provincial or federal government money came for something that was on number four, then that would be a one-off kind of decision, I think that would, we would probably want to look at. But I wouldn't expect something that's, you know, 10th and, you know, to, uh, jump up to one just because it got 50% funding from somebody else.
Thank you, Councilor Kelly. I guess the only thing one I'll add is that I think one of the important principles that's on here is the fourth one down. So that's shorter payback or return on investment. And again, it's the potential for things that are a catalyst for development and, and for development on the non-res, you know, the high rent or high, high density residential. That's where we're, that's where we're thinking headway, right? So that, that to me was a really, really important principle as well.
Okay, good. Sorry. Do you stagger your borrowing terms?
We're gonna, we're gonna talk a little bit about debt laddering. You're in the presentation, so then we'll can have a good discussion on that as well.
Yeah. And when I look at like whether or not things should come up higher than priorities, like if we say there's absolutely hard and fast, it's not a top council priority at that moment. And we're not doing it, we're actually also doing a disservice. So I think it should still be like, if an opportunity comes up, we have a discussion about whether or not it should happen. Because there's an opportu, lost opportunity cost here where you say it's not a priority now, but we'll do it in 10 years. And in 10 years, you're now paying full price for it, plus inflationary, et cetera, et cetera. So there could be a lost opportunity. So I just, I don't see a hard and fast rule on this. And I look at like even the transit buses, that there was opportunities for, um, like a couple of years ago, they said, okay, we have extra green trip funding. We can buy the buses now, even though they're not slated to be on the agenda for two more years. And at that time, council said, let's go for that because there was a huge opportunity to have it highly subsidized. So I mean, saying as a blanket no statement really takes away the possible discussion. It could still be a no at the end of the day, but I don't think that we should be saying it just off the top that we won't have that proper discussion on it or take it away from the opportunity because things could change if, if you can get something massively paid for and it's a very limited expense to the city and we are able to improve our infrastructure by doing that, saying a blanket no doesn't serve anybody well. So that, that's what I would just, you know, putting blanket statements there could actually hurt us. That's all.
Yeah, no, I, and, and I would agree with that. And certainly if something is very highly subsidized. Also keep in mind too, when we keep talking about the, like the prioritization matrix and how things are prioritized, remember it doesn't consider the time span. So something doesn't get bumped lower in priority because it's not on the plan for eight years, right? It, it gets scored a number, right? Um, and so you're going to have stuff in the top half of your list and the bottom half, even if it might not be for nine or 10 years. So it doesn't mean it falls to the bottom of the priority, um, just because it's, it's out. And if you remember, so you know, some, some of the other presentations that I've done on our capital, like without, well, not considering the use of debt financing, we just look at our grants and our P S U and all that. We have money just to fund about 25% of what's on our right? So I guess, I guess that's, that's where I just want us to be careful. And you're right, a, a conversation is great. If, if a grant opportunity comes off, it's worth having the conversation. Yeah, absolutely. And certainly if it's one that, that highly is some, you know, highly.
Part of the prioritizing, instead of this, it should be part of the prioritization matrix.
And there is, so there's a thing on, on, on available grants. That's always a challenge because a lot of times we wouldn't know when we're scoring a project. Cause the government quite often comes out with in the middle.
It's almost like if the grant comes out, then we have to rescore.
Right. Or you, or you look at it differently for sure. And we're, and, um, we do a lot of work on grants. Look for every grant that's available and, and determine whether it's, it's, uh, worth applying for and going through that step process. So.
Did we get any grant money for the electric power stations?
Still, um, it's still out.
Okay.
Yeah, they have asked, uh, we made, we got to the
They got their money already.
Yeah, we've got to the second phase and they asked us for some specific information on each of the locations. And that's been submitted. So I imagine we will get something.
All right, next slide.
All right. Okay. So the city's previously approved debt financing for several projects. Um, some were secured many years ago and are close to being retired, Ray Given Drive and Service Place. Some projects were approved and completed where the final debenture amounts are known and have been secured, such as project nine and the rate road 260 servicing. And some projects have been approved as multi-year projects where some of the required debt has been secured and the remainder will be taken in future years as the project progresses. This would be the case for the regiven drive twinning project and North St. Albert Trail and Fire Hall four. So we, we do try to stagger our borrowings only as we need the cash. We don't want to take it out all at the beginning and then take four years for the, for the project to get finished. So. And then we have a few projects, uh, like the police accommodations building that, uh, they've been approved. But we haven't, uh, they haven't even started yet. So.
We don't have a borrowing ballot for the police.
No, I get it. Yeah, that'll be coming for probably soon. So what's our starting point? Impact on taxes. So I know you got a little bit of this in, in some of the financial that we got. We do have a few debts, uh, that we took on 20 years ago, which are represented by the negative person. I'm sorry. I know the numbers are quite small on here. That are set to retire over the next several years. And against some of the larger debentures we've taken on recently were non-tax funded. So they are affecting the taxes. And, uh, so some of these will help offset some of the new debts we have to take on, although it's limited, limited offset, but there is a little bit there.
That's a good picture. Look at you go, accountant.
Perfect start. So as I mentioned before, we've hit a crossroads or a kind of perfect storms in term of capital projects. We're recommending moving ahead with projects such as the Northeast servicing projects to ensure already planned development can proceed. We'll be recommending that servicing to Lakeview Business District move forward to ensure ways to capitalize on significant opportunities. The city is just completing the recreational needs assessment engagement and the new recreational land, um, being negotiated. At some point, there's going to be an expectation of the community that we built something. These are just some examples of some imminent decisions over this council term that will likely need to be made. However, there's many more projects that we need to plan for over the next 20 to 30 years. So after reviewing the municipal growth capital and the list of offsite levy projects that engineering has deemed likely, were likely to require the city to front end, we came up with a list of at least 35 projects that would require debt financing in order to proceed. So the projects, the timing and the costs are based on our current plans and the best information we have available at this time. If executed as planned, this represents $500 million in new projects spanning from 2023 to 2050. We also have to consider that this is only what we know to date and is based on current scope, high level cost estimates and current interest rates. As projects move further through the approval and design phases, these variables can change quite drastically. For various reasons such as legislated and council policy debt limits and impact on taxes, it's recognized that it would be impossible to proceed with all of these projects as they are laid out now. Today, today's meeting is designed as an introduction to the concept of developing a long-term debt strategy. Its importance and some of the things that you're going to need to consider when making difficult choices. In some of those slides that I'm going to show you now that are based on some of our, you know, our real tenure plan as it sits and stuff right now. Um, I don't want us to really get really focused on whether you agree with the projects themselves or the timing of the projects, but rather understanding the long-term impacts of the decisions that we need to do. Not today, like actually today, but you know. And so like I mentioned here at the beginning of the presentation, not moving projects forward with the use of debt is not always the best decision. It is a viable, effective tool when planned for and used appropriately. So there are two major things to consider when contemplating debt financing, the impact on our debt limits and the impact on taxes. Regardless of how debt is funded, all debt, including municipal utility and offsite levy projects are counted against our debt limit. Council policy on debt management imposes much stricter restrictions than the MGA. So based on this policy, the blue bar, which is our total debt cannot exceed the red line, which is our council imposed debt limit. And a further policy restriction surrounding tax-supported debt would dictate that the orange bar, which is our total tax-supported debt can't exceed the green line. So with all the identified projects we just saw in that kind of word cloud of the just shown, based on their current values and timing, um, we'd be well beyond our allowable limits.
Starting in 2025.
Yeah. And this, that these are things like that we have on our, our, like, it's probably some offset levy projects in there. That are supposed to happen in 2025. Yeah. So it would push us well above our limits.
Our internally imposed limit.
And even, there's even a couple of places where the blue bar that color line, which is the MGA limit. But yeah, quite a few times above our own internal limit and almost the entire time above our tax-supported.
Oh yeah, exactly. Yeah.
So.
And you were actually suggesting we take away the tax-supported piece of it.
I'm, I'm not sure yet. I'm, I'm interested to have the discussion.
Okay. We're getting there?
Yeah.
Okay. That's an interesting slide.
Okay. So the other met major consideration, um, I know that spawned everybody's mind is the, when contemplating debt is the impact that it's going to have on taxpayers in terms of an annual tax increase. So again, based on all those identified projects, 500 million projects over the next 30 years, council people would be looking at some pretty significant tax increases relating to financing in the next 10 years. So these bars represent only the impact of debt. General inflationary tax increases and approved increases to service levels would be over and above these values. So you can see with some of them, we'd be looking at over 3% just related to debt if we went ahead with the projects as they're laid out now. Which, you know, I've already said, it's, it can't happen because it would, that is above our limits and it, you know, we can't move that fast. So a little bit to, uh, Councilor Mancey's piece, the laddering. So as was depicted on the last two slides, the identified projects as they're currently laid out do not create a sustainable financial future. It's unlikely we would move ahead with all of these projects or certainly not based on the timing as they exist today. So one of the goals of a long-term debt strategy is so laddering is a term most often associated with monetary investments. When choosing among investment options, we pay particular attention to the maturity needs to ensure that we have regular access to cash flow and have the ability to consistently reinvest in higher yielding products. And we're looking on the investment side. So the same concept can be applied and should be applied to debt financing. If we plan our debts so that we consistently have debts reaching their maturity needs, we can fund new projects with less or no impact to taxes. So as you can see in this graph, I just threw in some, and, and a lot of these slides that I'm showing honestly are just based on random numbers. Cause I'm just more trying to get the concept across. But in this case, I showed, uh, if we took on $15 million in debt every year, come 2041, every year after that, it would be 0% tax increase. Cause you'd have the exact amount coming off and the exact new amount coming on. And you'd forever be able to build new projects with very limited amounts of taxes. But, but it's, it's not, it's, it will take us a long time to that point.
And this is because we've historically been so debt-averse.
Yeah. Yeah. So this is something we need to work towards in the long term. So as was mentioned, other than the last few older debentures, um, we're not going to see any of our new uh, debentures expiring until 2030, 2039 and the ones we've just taken out in the last couple of years. We have significant needs in the community now. It would be prudent to move forward with debt financing in a steady and planned fashion. And if we do that well, it means that after that 2038, 39 timeframe, we should have consistently have debts retiring, which will allow us to fund new projects with limited impact of taxpayers. Just to give you a sense of, um, cause I know there's been lots of discussion around interest rates and that, you know, they've been kind, they've been going up and stuff like that too. Just to get a sense of numbers. So, um, all of my numbers that I've been showing on this presentation are based on 4.71%, which I think was the May first, um, upper treasury rate. So at 4.71%, a 1% tax increase is equated to a $15 million debenture.
Is that the same interest rate for all terms though?
No, so it is. And I always just, I just picked the 20-year, um, because that's what we've typically, typically done. Yeah. So you were talking about terms. So I mean, that's another, that's also another way that we can help speed up a little bit of this laddering, right? Is if we do, we've typically done most of our big debentures over 20 years. I don't like to go 25 and 30 because it just adds so much ultimate interest, right? That you're, that you're paying. But the problem is as soon as you shorten the term, payment gets really high, right? So it's a balance of that. So that's why some of our
Unless your interest rate goes down.
Unless your interest rate goes down, right?
And if you shorten the term, you're paying off more of the principal each payment then?
Uh, well, it's, so how, how their debts work is that you pay the same amount throughout the entire debenture. And you start off kind of similar to a mortgage, you're paying more to interest and less to principal and then it just one. So for our smaller ones, we have gone shorter terms. But like I said, that makes your payment higher in general when you're going shorter terms. But it's, you know, we try and, we try and look at what we think is the best. That's what we recommend to council. But it's, you know, we try and we try and look at what we think is the best. That's what we recommend to council. It's hard with the bigger projects though, because if, you know, you're taking a thirty million dollar debenture. If you do it on anything less than twenty years, like your payments are going to be huge, which is a huge impact to taxes, right? So we've been trying to try to balance that.
And are we talking about always using Alberta Capital Financing? For the province or what the Treasury Board to finance or is there something you're looking for? In a policy that would allow us to go to like a traditional bank?
Policy does allow us to go outside and to look at other financing sources. And it's actually something, because all municipalities and the province are, you know, a little concerned about the changes in interest rates with with Alberta Treasury. So I know at least one municipality has started doing interest rate swaps. And so we're just actually starting to look into that. It's not something I'm super familiar with, but I've got the finance team is kind of doing some benchmarking and looking at what some of that might look like.
Can you give a little bit of an example of what an interest rate swap would be?
When you go through Alberta Capital Financing, the terms are pretty strict and restrictive. And and we always ask the question every time we have a big surplus, can we pay off some debt now? And you're like, no, because Alberta Capital Financing doesn't allow it. But a traditional bank might allow us to pay off more principal or put a lump sum on a piece of debt. So that would be a nice option for us.
Potentially, I think the plus side of the Treasury, one that you wouldn't get with the other side is that you have that locked in interest rate for that level long-term, right? So in a rising interest rate environment.
And they're going up.
Like I said, we need to research it. We need to understand what those other options are. And whether we think that it's the right thing for St. Albert. So that is something we're kind of looking into. Because we know we've got a lot of big projects coming up and we want to make the best recommendation to council of how we how we actually finance that.
Let's keep that flexibility in there then.
So some of the future strategy and policy decisions. So this is just a little bit of a sub-agenda for the next section of the presentation. And we're going to talk about the concept of growth pays for growth, how offsite levy recoveries and assessment revenue to that picture. And we're going to talk about the three major policies currently driving our decisions. So the concept of growth pays for growth is a philosophy in term that's used quite regularly among both council members and administration. However, this phrase is not really embedded in any council financial policies. Nor is there a well-accepted definition of what this actually means and how it's applied in real life. So some of the comments around this term that I that I've heard include. Existing residents shouldn't be responsible to pay for any expenses that are incurred due to newer future residents and businesses. I've heard if costs are ultimately going to be paid by another source, for example, developers ultimately paying for offsite levy infrastructure, then that meets that philosophy. Yeah, so there's some, so I think it's something we have to look to define. So in practical terms, we've implemented this philosophy in two major areas. In our budget guiding principles policy, we use fifty five percent of our new assessment growth to fund. New business cases to support the growth of the city. In our offsite levy recovery fund policy, we use the funds. We use the funds to offset the debt costs for offsite levy projects so that there's no impact to taxes. So those are kind of two practical ways that we kind of implement that philosophy. So again, this is kind of another question period for council on this. So my first question to council, so if growth must pay for growth. Then should any growth dollars be directed towards existing taxpayers? So and I'm sorry, and I'm not saying I disagree with this or agree with this. So currently part of our policy says twenty percent of our annual growth assessment revenue is providing provided directly to existing taxpayers. Use it to offset that tax costs. Some, yes, some of our business cases, which are funded through assessment growth, are providing newer enhanced services to existing taxpayers, existing taxpayers. And again, so I'm saying, I'm not saying I don't agree with this approach, but it's still a question that they're asking. They're asking accountants. Does that still make sense that we're applying some of that new new growth that's coming into the city that we're kind of crediting it to our current residents?
First of all, I heard Spruce Grove is remitting their offsite levies to include recreation.
Oh, they are.
Libraries.
Hmm, they are, eh? Wow. Maybe well, kind of there's for that for that broad, for that.
Unallowable.
I know, but we pay taxes on them until the end of time.
But we're not building them. So if we're so. And add a separate levy onto all new lots sold in new growth areas to help fund for that new library and that new rec center. Because that is growth. And I guess I was talking to Derek Prohar and he said that will bring Scro's offsite levies in line with the Dukes. I guess their levies must be low, so they have that flexibility to do that. Lucky that. We don't. I like our policy. I like the twenty percent because. Let's say we need new. Transit buses for growth. Those transit buses are still going to serve existing residents or if we need a new. Garbage truck, whatever. I still feel like there is always some spillover into existing residences. If we build a new rec center, the rec center will be new and the existing residents will want to go there and serve us, right?
And all the current ones are gaining this bunch of roads.
Yeah, yeah. Or if you build something that we don't even have, like if we build a mountain bike skills park, that's growth. You're going to have the entire city using it. So I like the way it's set up.
Not me, but. The bike and skills, they're not, they're not the same word.
I don't know. What do you guys have? I've got Wes and then Ali.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I tend to agree with you. There is a sense that that growth impacts our current residents adversely. I mean, all you have to do is live behind a growing development. Whether it be Botanica or whether it be Jensen Lakes or whether it be Iron Ridge North. So there are there are impacts to current residents by by growth. And I think our current policy acknowledges that. And so I I'm supportive of our current policy.
Yeah, I'm I'm supportive, but I really want us to be cautious about language that suggests that new areas don't support. Old areas or or kind of like you mentioned, you know, a bike skills park that it wouldn't support the whole community. And, you know, when I, when I talk to residents about this, one of the things I say is, you know, I live in Aitkinsdale. It's one of the least dense areas in a city and it's it's my age. So it's, you know, starting to need replacement parts. But but when you talk about the maintenance that's needed outside my house, you know, the the snow removal, the pipes in the ground and sidewalks. I'm paying less than someone in a new neighborhood who has a, you know, smaller lot, if you will. So I just want us to be cautious about kind of that us versus them kind of mindset when when we are planning.
And us versus versus them changes every day of the year, right? You get you get a new resident to come in.
So, yeah. And you know what? And I, you know, I think of Fountain Park Pool. So I lived at Fountain Park Pool as a child. It was built around the same tire, opened around the same time I was born. So my grandparents paid for it and they didn't use it ever. And and that's okay. And I'm okay paying for the infrastructure that my grandkids are going to use. I I absolutely see that as my responsibility, so.
I think everybody likes it as is.
Yeah, and that's, that doesn't surprise me. Again, it was just a question I just wanted to ask because it's one of the ways that we use our growth dollars today. So it's always never hurts to check back on ourselves.
It's a pretty progressive policy, the way we have it written. It was. Yeah, it was unique, I think, when it was first drafted.
I, yeah, I think it is. Okay, so the second question is, and I am, I'll probably have to give a little bit of context to this after I read it. So given that existing taxpayers benefit from growth assessment revenues, we just talked about. Should they contribute towards debt payments for projects that are expected to develop? So council has a goal of increasing non-residential tax. And we know that if that happens, existing residents are going to benefit from that if we can get our our non-res up. So should existing taxpayers help get us there, knowing that they will be the future benefactors of that assessment growth? So I guess what I'm saying is, so right now with our offsite levy recovery policy. Our modeling has to show that we're going to reflect the offsite levies back. In a time period that allows us to hundred percent make that debt payment every year, right? So we have to prove that we have like almost four years worth of debt payments. So that there's no way that a taxpayer will have to pay anything towards that offsite levy infrastructure. And so what I'm saying is. So we we know that if we can get lake view service and if it does take off and we get lots of new development. You know, there's going to be a lot of new assessment growth coming in. And that's going to, that'll help existing taxpayers. So would it be horrible if the the levies coming in only covered seventy five percent of the debt payment? And twenty five percent of the debt payment was was put on the tax though? So I guess that's kind of my question. I don't know if that was very clear.
I'm walking around, I have no idea.
That's confusing.
Yeah, yeah, because I mean, that, doesn't that counter what we just talked about, growth paying for growth?
Well, that's why I'm questioning growth pays for growth. I'm trying to understand what what it actually means and how it's applied in real life. Because, like I said, some people have said, well, if developers ultimately pay for that infrastructure, that meets the criteria of growth pays for growth. Ultimately doesn't mean that the cash flow is necessary.
Yeah, yeah. Because it, if you've got new assessment growth, growth paying for new areas, it's taking, is it taking away from RMR? Right? If you see where I'm thinking, like, I mean, we're not, if I'm building, if a new developer's building in Jensen Lakes. We still have ongoing costs for the rest, like for seeing Aitkinsdale streets, sewers, water, all of that. So I'm trying to, I'm, this is where I'm confused. I'm not following where you are going.
So in the case, so in the case of RMR, though, remember to our budget guiding principles policy, I think councillor Hughes had me putting in that. So if we get new growth revenue from Jensen Lakes, a portion of it is actually going to RMR.
Okay, that's, that's what I, because I would say, is it going to RMR or is it going to our stabilization reserve?
So we have fifty five percent that's available for for new business cases. Twenty percent goes to RMR and. Why can't I remember that?
Twenty five.
Sorry, twenty five goes to the, and twenty five goes to the base.
Yeah, because, yeah. So I'm, is that kind of the question then?
Well, I guess just the question is, so with our current offsite levy recovery fund. Unless I could show to council through our model that. Based on the development, like we will work really closely with engineering on their development forecast of how many acres and what area is going to come online. And so then we calculate how much levies we're going to get. If in a given year, I knew I wasn't, I was only going to collect half the amount of levies that I needed to make my debt payment. Right now, the policy would say we can't even do that project. Because if I can't prove that I'm going to have money coming in every single year exactly to cover the debt payment, then we wouldn't allow it to go forward. So would like, would council be supportive? That there could potentially be some timing differences where some of our, like our existing tax levy helps to pay for some of those projects.
Okay.
If it ever, if it ever dipped under for a period of time.
You good?
No, I don't. I, I, I mean, yeah, no, I don't understand.
Yeah, I'm confused too.
Yeah. I'll be honest, I don't understand. Am I, am I, what am I missing?
Sorry.
Good.
Go ahead. I was just going to ask, like you said, you added on to taxes now and and then it kind of catch up down the road? Is that how you explained it?
Well, I guess how it would work is theoretically the principal, principal and interest payments would go into the budget. Okay, as as an expense.
Right.
But we would be able to offset that through any recovery, like as our levies are paid and every year we get paid back on our offsite.
But not for a while is what you were saying.
Well, they're always cycling in, right? Like our our recoveries are always cycling in. But there could be a case where there isn't enough in the reserve to hundred percent offset the amount that we put into the budget in a given year. So then in theory, it's there's going to be a small piece that taxpayers could be paying for. We may have to take this question a little bit and then be. It is a hard concept to explain.
It was bread out for lunch, maybe.
Because if I was told like by the city, oh, your taxes are going up this year, but you'll reap the rewards down the road, I would not believe it. You know, as a taxpayer kind of thing. So that's the, I don't think the general public would accept that explanation.
Okay, well, let's move on for now.
Are you going to send us out? Because I like to think about that one because, or at least do some more research on that one. Because I'm not a hundred, I don't know what it means.
Yeah, and I'd have to maybe, what I can maybe do too is also just think through some more practical examples that'll help explain it.
Okay, good.
My third question on this section was, should should we invest now? In projects that increase our non-residential assessment to support future non-tax generating projects like DARP and community amenities, right? We see that and I'm going to show you some examples of how that can potentially potentially work. And then my last one, and I don't know, but we might want us to skip over this for today. But I just said if we were to develop an actual definition of growth pays for growth. What would be some of the words or the phrases that you would want to see in that definition? That's something you could maybe just take away to and think about. I can't think of anything.
And Ontario just come in with that whole new legislation around growth paying for growth. Yeah, Ontario just came in with a new act that basically changed all of the way their assessment. And and so it might be actually, there might be a definition in in there.
I think if you were to have a definition, you might want to distinguish between residential growth and non-residential growth, for sure. Because we all benefit from non-residential growth. And I guess the word maybe local, so a local park is very much for those local residents, I would think. But you would never call the mountain bike skills park a local park, right? So somehow to define what's a local amenities versus.
I just, I just found the act.
So Wes, go ahead.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. It's interesting that we're discussing what the the term growth pays for growth. And I appreciate the the tagline at the bottom of your screen saying including the city. Now, you could say that growth plays for growth, including the growth of the city. But it could also mean that the city also has to pray for the growth. And and to your point, Madam Mayor, the the difference between residential growth. And 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 sort of industrial growth or or recreational growth and stuff like that. Certainly, there needs to be a a city or a residential or user component to to pay for that growth. But but the. The the normal interpretation of growth pays for growth is that is that the growth itself covers the entire cost. And that the residents don't have to bear the the any sort of burden of growth. And and I think by defining it a little bit better, we can better understand. And and it will help our development of our own policy if we if we come up with a definition in that regard. I say that because I always remember Hazel McCallum pounding the table and says growth will always pay for growth. And we don't have to pay for growth. And I'm not sure that's necessarily true.
Realistic, yeah.
So as we've talked about, so when you strategically debt can be an effective form of financing for large, far-reaching, long-lived assets. Again, we talked about it creates generational equity, meaning that future taxpayers will contribute to the costs of those assets that they will benefit from. Regular and planned use of debt also helps provide cash flow stability within our capital program. Exacerbated by the reduction in the availability of grounds, it's now almost impossible to fund large projects with cash. Without deferring or eliminating other needed projects. There are components of the policy that severely restrict council's use of debt. I guess, I think it sounded open to, but I'm just going to ask, like, is council open to revisiting some of those components within the debt policy? To make sure that we're still meeting the needs?
I think so, yeah. That's a long time ago, two thousand and three.
Okay, so some of the concept again in the policy that council, considering including the additional limits posed by the policy. So firstly, there's what we define as the internal limit, which is currently set at eighty five percent of the MGA limit. Is this the right number? Should it be higher or should it be lower? So that's something something to consider. Personally, I think it's, I think that's a great piece of the policy that there is an internal debt limit that is something less than what the MGA limit is. But I'm interested in people's perspective of is eighty five percent the right number, right? Is that too restrictive? Is it not restrictive enough? Right, so something to think about. And you know, I'm happy to get anybody's, you know, just general thoughts at any time if you, you know, if you want to think about it.
My thought is if we really need you to go above it, we just make a quick amendment to the policy.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it just it also, yeah, it needs to be there just in case we do have an actual disaster or emergency or something that we have to, we need to have some capacity to deal with that. And it's just, is fifteen percent enough capacity? Or are we restricting ourselves too much? Again, so the second major component is the council imposed internal tax supported debt limit. So again, part of the issue with this limit is that similar to the discussion around both pays for growth. So the text within the policy can be ambiguous and different people interpret that clause differently. So I'm interested to understand your guys' perspective of either how you interpret it or, you know, is it something we should consider? So so again, so the main question that that I want to answer is, what are we trying to achieve with that restriction by having a tax supported debt limit? And if there's a common understanding of that goal is, is that the best way to achieve it? If something along those lines is still desired, would a new term or a more clearly defined term support that goal? So that was a lot of questions all over.
I told you that I interpret the offset levies as not tax supported, but and I would be willing to take it from fifty percent to something higher.
Okay, so you like the idea of.
So I I would get rid of it too. I got I'm I feel like the MGA has already given us our marching orders and we have our own limit and that's sufficient. But I'm open to.
I'm interested to see if council feels that really what we're trying to control with that limit is the impact on taxes. If your annual tax increase, is that what people feel we're trying to achieve by that target?
Wes has got his head up.
God, you know, I wouldn't mind reviewing it ourselves, but I I was there for some of the debates when when we are talking about taking on debt to build some projects and council of the day said, no, we don't want to. There was a there's certain perspective that debt put the community at risk. And we have to understand that that generation came out of twenty percent tax or interest rates of the early eighties. And they still are residents of our community. And so if we are going to change this, we have to we have to be understanding of of their perspective on this and and then and then make our argument as to why we're going to increase our debt support or change our limits to and 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 make the case as to why this is in our best interest. Because for them, they came from this idea that if if you take on too much debt and interest rates go up, half of them lost their houses back in those days. So there's a real fear around that. And I don't think we can just unilaterally forget that. Now, having said that, I think fifty percent is too low myself. It just hamstrings us to develop the city that the city, the citizens actually want us to to build. But I I my point is, is that if we're going to do this, you have to make sure we communicate it carefully.
Yeah, well said, Wes. Gina?
I agree with you, Wes. There's always a danger about having people understand the implications. I think that, you know, moving it past the fifty percent mark, one of the reasons why we should be considering it is because of the amount of offsite levable projects that are influencing up to fifty percent. They're not affecting tax rate. We like as Diana said multiple times, how we have like a cushioning plan to decrease the odds of having it have any tax impact, but it is infecting affecting our total tax limit. So we're trying to consider this and explain it to the public as to why we might be increasing it further. I think that that needs to be one of the explanations that's communicated is that everything that we're putting into taxes is not actually a tax impact and but it does affect our tax limit. That's it.
Anyone else have any thoughts on the internal tax supported debt limit?
I would I would just like to see what the differences would be. Let's say, so you I mean, let's say the debt limit is fifty five percent or let's say the debt limit is seventy five percent. Just see what the impacts are.
Well, go back to that slide that showed the bar that with our internal.
I would.
We were way above it, so.
Yeah, but would that would.
That one, yeah.
So if if I if we moved our line.
So it'd be your green, it would be your green line?
Yeah.
That's what it is right now.
That's what it is right now.
And that's.
So fifty five percent would barely move it up, right?
Fifty five, yeah, I know, but seventy five percent, so or whatever. Like, I mean, like, I was just looking at what Edmonton's is. And Edmonton is fifty three percent of the debt limit set by the property.
That's their not their tax support, is it?
No, that's well, they're they're they do, yeah, no, twenty.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think Edmonton actually, I could be wrong, but they might actually have a separate debt regulation from most municipalities, just like they're under a.
Well, okay, or they might now, it might it might change.
It's ever on their municipal.
Yeah, no, that's true. That there that they've got a dividend that comes in, which is totally different. But I mean, I mean, I would just like to see what some of what that would impact. Like, I mean, if because based on what Wes and, you know, there's that conservative part of me that is risk adverse and so I.
That's why.
I would I would just I would just say what and and what's 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 realistic or not what's realistic, but I mean, what's acceptable? For lack of a better term.
You know, if you if you took it out, like right now, the green lines, just over a hundred million dollars.
Yeah.
That's a rec facility. That's all you'd get.
Yeah.
There's no other projects. That's the that's the reality of that.
We're already halfway there.
Yeah. Well, you have to kind of look at it in that in that context, what stuff costs today.
No, I I, yeah, I understand, but I'm just saying, from a long from a policy wise standpoint, you know, like Wes has identified, that was the that was the observations at the time and that was the the reality. I don't, I don't, I mean, we could be facing those same situations currently or in very short timeframe. So I mean, I just think we if we move, we just have to cautiously and with some background. I I would need to know what the impacts would be.
I could just pick up on something that Council Broadhead said, which I thought was quite interesting. You know, when we were talking about maybe looking at another form of financing besides Alberta Treasury. So, um, Council Broadhead, you had mentioned, like, you know, and absolutely people like in the eighties, when the interest rates went up to seventeen, eighteen percent loss or how was it? As I mentioned, with the advantage with Alberta Treasury, that will never happen to us. For a debt that we've already agreed to take on, we're locked in. So if interest rates go up to eighteen percent, we're locked in at three for twenty years, right? So we're protected. We cannot take on new debt as those if the interest rates are what we have. Now, if we start looking at some other financing models through traditional banks, we might not quite have that that protection. So that's that that was just an interesting component. So because it does sound like that the the fear is that it's it's really the impact on your taxes. Like, how much are people's taxes going to go go up? Because of it, right? So if it's, you know, if you have if you have a needed project to go forward and they're, you know, and this might not be the greatest three or four years to be talking about it because we know we're facing some pretty significant tax increases for some other reasons as well. But if you were in a period where you were, you know, there was some tax elasticity, right? That people, you know, would be willing to take on a a smaller tax increase, that might be the time to move ahead with with a project that, you know, increases. So it's to me, to me, it sounds like it's kind of more related to the tax increase and how much is the taxpayers paying for it? And so it just gives me something to think about if 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 a tax supported debt limit is the way to do that or maybe there's another way to do that that allows more flexibility for council. But it was a really great comments, so.
How's it stated again right now? Fifty percent of what?
It's fifty percent of our internal limit. So you have the MGA limit and we times it by eighty five percent to get our internal limit and then we times it by fifty percent again to get our tax. So it's probably like.
But then, so what you're saying, you could calculate different, maybe about the annual increase?
Well, I'm just saying, maybe it's not, maybe you don't have an internal tax for a debt limit. But as a debt gets brought forward, council understands what would what will be the impact on taxes in the next year if we take on this debt. Is it a half a percent? Is it a, you know what I mean? And maybe the decision's based more on that than specific limits.
Right.
Or debt from that perspective. Like, I think you might be able to achieve the same same goal without having, because there because there may be times where we're well within our limit, but there's no tax elasticity and at that particular point in time to take that on. So I know we're not going to do it because we can't continue other things that are impacting the tax rate in the next couple of years, so we're going to delay it, even though it's well within our. Okay, so I just wanted to talk a little bit about budget taxation guiding principles policy. So the main component of this policy relating to debt is the concept of the capital. So I'm I'm I am of the opinion that this concept, while it was incredibly creative and effective at the time of its implementation, I feel like it's really actually outgrown its useful life. For many years, the overall value, as you guys know, of the capital funding formula remained constant and didn't grow with the offsetting of the city. From our perspective. So council has recognized this in the last several years. And so and and we've actually already kind of organically moved away from simply rebalancing within a set dollar amount between long term debt, lifecycle reserves and pay as you go. So recent long term debts have been included as an addition to the tax requirement as well as the annual increase related to our strategic long term RMR financial plan. So now that we have that, you know, in our financial plan, the purpose of today's session is to stress the importance of us developing a long term debt strategy. So one of the original goals of the capital funding formula was to stabilize tax impacts and our long terms strategy. Like I said, we've kind of organically moved away from this over the last several years because we've been, we've recognized that the pot isn't big enough to just take on a new debt, which means you'd have to pull money out of pay as you go in order to just rebalance. So I think, you know, we've recognized that and now we're adding money specifically to RMR. And so we've kind of stopped. And so and I'd like to see us kind of take this piece out of the policy. It just looked like debt and RMR and just a separate component.
Okay.
They're very different drivers, I think. So I don't know what it's.
So three separate pies instead of pieces of one pie.
Yeah, they're all just kind of separate components and and treat their own plans.
I'm with you there.
Young line, have any.
I don't see any hands up, no.
Yeah.
No, I know.
Okay.
I feel I feel for you, Diane. Everybody's kind of went, wow.
The most horrible one for like the last. We might have to, we might have to come back to that. What else is kind of a busy slide? Okay, so this is the section of the policy has it has an indirect link to debt is Schedule C seven in the which is the growth stabilization reserve. So right now, there's limits within that policy that may be limiting our ability to plan for the future. So one of the questions I had posed earlier is, should we invest now in projects that will generate future non-res taxes in order to offset the operating impacts of future desired community projects that do not create tax revenues? So basically, the policy at this point restricts the balance of the fund to two and a half million. It can be implied against the tax base at council's discretion anytime the proposed tax increase is in excess of three and a half percent, even if that tax increase is driven solely by inflation or service level changes and is unrelated to growth. So I know we've we've had, we had significant discussion about this a couple several years ago when, you know, some council members realized that this fund could grow quite exponentially, quite quickly. And I know that caused some concern. But I've given an example here. So one of the things I'd like to investigate and, you know, have council consider is if we were to protect the new assessment growth that came out of Lakeview, right? Like, so not have a part of our normal growth assessment revenue, you know, the fifty five. If we were to protect like any new assessment growth that comes from Lakeview. If we were able to protect that investment to support the capital operating costs of new facilities that council wants to build. So in order to do this, depending on the timing of these facilities, the balance of the reserve, we'd have to change the policy. The balance of the reserve would have to go way above two, two and a half million, but could have the effect of reducing the amount of future borrowing. So in this example, and I'm just going to go through this quick and I'm like, I I know this is, it's kind of a difficult concept. I may need to do a paper almost kind of just on this piece. But it is so new assessment growth. So these are just, these are just made up numbers and it's again, it's to illustrate the concept. So if we service Lakeview and in the first year, we get a bunch of business in there, generate two million dollars in assessment growth revenue. We.
Is that gross or net? The reason I ask is it because you have to still clear the streets in Lakeview and.
I guess that's gross. I I'm going to use gross numbers for now, but that's that's actually the point. Like, if we were to do this, we'd have to consider that as well. So you'd have you basically you collect your two million dollars in year one and you kind of put it in the bank. So that goes into your one time column. But that that two million, they're going to pay you every single year.
Yeah.
So until you actually apply it to, like, at some point, you are going to have to apply it to road plowing and all of that kind of stuff for those new areas. But until you do, you've got that money coming in every year. So in year two, another, a new business comes in, we get another one point eight million dollars in assessment revenue. So now we got the two million from the year before and then we get the one point eight million from this year. So now, in year two, we we deposited three point eight million dollars into our bank account. And we have ongoing money of three point eight million that we can eventually apply to something. So as we go down all of this, and again, these numbers are probably like way high, but I just wanted to. So at the end of that five or six years, we would have thirty seven million dollars in the bank, physically in the bank, and I would have ten million dollars worth of that ongoing tax revenue that I could then apply. So if we were to build a fifty million dollar amenity site, we could we'd pay cash for thirty seven million of it. We wouldn't have to debt finance, we don't have to debt finance a portion of it. And the entire amount of the operating costs of five million would be covered by that. And we'd still have, we'd still have five million left over. So just a concept, something to to consider, how you can have have some of that assessment growth money just help pay for future infrastructure without having to take on debt, right? So then when we're into the future, we can take on less debt because we we bought some.
It works for an industrial area. It totally works for an industrial because your your differential between the net and the gross is small.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and maybe it's only seventy five, even if it's only fifty percent of any assessment growth gets kind of captured and saved for future, you know, something something like that.
Is this the way you had originally envisioned the assessment reserve, like the.
Yeah, this is how it was written originally and then we changed the policy after the fact because you were seeing the dollars grow quite exponentially. But it would have given us, it would have given us money to pay for pay for things and not have to take on debt. Right?
It's funny because I obviously had a hard time understanding this because I think it was my motion to change it because I didn't understand it, just that simple graph. It's totally got me figured out now. Wes and Gina?
I, well, great graph. I was going to say it's brave council that does this when you're facing five and seven percent tax increase and say that we're going to put away growth and and ask our current residents to take on a tax increase like that.
Or to take away part of growth.
So I'm I'm just saying it's it 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 looks good and it certainly would be a an interesting debate in council because the question around intergenerational equity would come into this equation. And then, you know, the hardship of our current taxpayers when we're putting away assessment growth that could that could alleviate their their current burden. But it it certainly looks good for the future.
Council Hughes.
So Diane, when I look at this chart, it shouldn't under growth reserve the one time shouldn't say two, three point eight. It should say two and then plus the three point eight and then plus the five point nine. Because it's like all you have is one times and then thirty seven million. And the growth reserve for one time usage is going up every year. So just that chart is a little misleading. But you're talking about just using Lakeview money, right? You're not talking about all of it. But I'm also like our typical growth assessments generally about two to two point eight million. So I'm thinking that these numbers, I know that they were just hypothetical, but I think they're also elevated from what we should be expecting considering it's almost like seventy percent or more of what we would typically receive from the entire new growth across all categories. Are are you actually expecting to get these kind of numbers?
No, and I said that right at the beginning. I thought these numbers were probably inflated, but I was I was purposely using bigger numbers just to be able to kind of show the math. I'm not sure where you see the one time column being wrong.
Well, the the growth reserve one time, like in twenty twenty four, you'd have two million. In twenty twenty five, you'd have two million plus. Well, the the growth reserve one time, like in 2024, you'd have 2 million and 2025, you'd have 2 million plus 3.8 million. In 2026, you'd have the five point, you know, you'd have the two.
But in 2025, I'm adding my brand new 1.8 million.
Okay.
We're still going to pay us 2 million, so I'm actually getting 3.8 in that second year. And that's how it all adds to 37 million.
Okay, I'm following you now. For some reason, I was looking at the other one here, okay, it's okay.
So these numbers are definitely, definitely high and again, it was more for illustrative purposes and I'm also. And again, I was suggesting just as a concept that we we parcel out Lakeview. And look at only the assessment growth, but maybe it's not 100%, maybe it's only 75%. Like it was just, it's really just a concept I kind of wanted to throw out there. To show council that there's a way that we can basically have the Lakeview businesses pay for the rec center or pay for downtown or you know what I mean?
What does our current policy say, it's a percentage of new assessment going to the reserve, the reserve is capped, but what does it say, what percent?
It's only what we don't use for business cases, so there's no planned contribution into this reserve. So out of our 55% that we're kind of allowed for business cases, if we only request 45% of it, then the other 10% goes into the reserve. But there's no, there's no planned contribution to this reserve at all.
Do that, I like that. Comments from the screen?
I mean, it's something to look at.
So I I see some sparked interest in this as a cool idea. Where do we take it from here? And can you please get us all that new assessment in those years?
I think what I think what I would want to do too is I want to work with, I want to work with assessments and with re planning. To understand, you know, if we, and engineering too, if we develop Lakeview. With economic development as well, like to get somewhere, and you know, it's hard to say realistic numbers, I mean, we, we don't know when people will come. But to get a better sense of how many, you know, hectares we could expect to come on in a year and what that would generate. So we can get some more realistic numbers to see what we're actually working with. And then we could do some scenarios at 100% of Lakeview at 75%.
Yeah, sure, I'd like to see it though at net, not gross.
Okay.
Obviously, and then if. If that net also includes the servicing of the debt that we're front ending to get to Lakeview, like I don't know if we would include that or not.
Well, the interesting thing is because you have two things happening with Lakeview, right? Because these developers are also going to pay back, pay their off site levies, which is theoretically could pay back the debt just for.
Okay, you're right, yeah.
Levis, and then you've got the assessment growth.
Some of the offset levies are our own though, aren't they?
Yeah, we have to pay some because we have their rate as well.
I just have a question, I might be totally off base and not understanding here, so bear with me. But say you're 24, 25, 26, you're pulling those numbers back to keep tax base down. And then you borrow the difference between those three years with the other years below. So you're not borrowing as much, but you're not raising the taxes either, could that be another direction?
I'm not sure.
Let's do that one more time.
Okay, so you've got, you're saving all this money through the years, right? So you've got your 2 million and your 3.8, your 5.9. In those, in the first three years, could you dedicate those amounts back to keep those tax dollars to say like, you know. 2%, 3% lower kind of thing. And then at the end of the term here, you have like 27 million and you borrow 10 of that. Rather than saying I have all the cash kind of thing, borrow what you've earned.
So I'm not sure what you're saying about which taxes when you say the 2 to 3%. So keep in mind, this is, this is one time money. So it's always hard, it's always difficult to use one time money to offset.
One time money, but you've got one time debt right now too, that's making taxes so high in the next three years, right?
Not all, no.
It's not actually one time money, you get 2 million dollars the first year, but 2 million dollars is ongoing.
It's, it's one time money and ongoing money, and I know this was the part that we were, that we were challenged with when we were working through this originally when we set up this policy. That there's kind of two components that you put this money in.
So I'm wondering if Shelley's talking about the cumulative ongoing.
Right.
To to keep taxes down.
So you're kind of, you're kind of balancing, right?
If it says we're going to offset taxes by point five.
You are, you would just have to dedicate part of that.
Yeah.
New assessment.
Another way you could do it, and again, I'd have to work through in my head the examples, but like when I said protecting Lakeview. Like I said, maybe it's only 75% of the assessment.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Another 25% of the assessment growth that goes in with the bigger pot. Of which 25% of it automatically goes against existing or existing taxpayers. So that might be another way to give some of this money to help offset taxes for existing.
Because if you're like high taxes, high taxes, high taxes and then, you know, and then expect people to. To want you to borrow money, it's going to be very, very difficult to convince that if you're, you know, being diligent and keeping your taxes down and then borrowing money. It's more acceptable mentally, I guess.
I like, I like the idea of setting Lakeview side as its own entity. And then having that, it grows in other areas, especially with annex lines. Yeah, so we're going to have growth, just on the San Antonio Trail with that stuff going on. So keep that. As the original version of your growth, like we should probably amend it back to what we thought it was supposed to be. And and just have a whole separate policy for Lakeview.
Right.
Yeah.
But you like the concept of even going back to even with the original, like with the rest of this again. To allow it to grow like the in the back to the original concept again. It wouldn't grow that fast because honestly, if the only money we're ever putting into it is the portion that we don't use for business cases. It's pretty tiny, honestly, because especially now that the business money has been dropped down to 55%. Because it used to be higher than that because we put the RMR in, there's not really going to be a whole lot of money to go into, to be honest with you. Like unless we actually have a strategy that we're actually. Putting purposely planning that money, right? Like, so. There's not much left to go in into it, but that's really the only place it can. In order for it to grow, it has to come from assessment growth revenue, it can't just be, it can't just be like. A deposit that we're making as part of the.
Tax transfer.
It's going to be just one type money, so.
Yeah, I'm supportive of doing some for Lakeview specifically, for sure.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, and then, you know, obviously we'll still consider putting some, you know, probably still putting some limits.
And I think.
Especially the ongoing person, like the one time, the one time money, I wouldn't worry so much about it growing. Because ultimately, it doesn't take long to spend 37 million dollars trying to build facilities and trying to.
I think you need some language about what that would be used for too, that reserve, right?
Yeah. I just, I just thought I'd really like the concept of of new businesses paying for the, the not, the non tax generating facilities that we want to build.
Yeah.
Residents, right?
Yeah, there you go, right there, there's a, there's a description of how we could, what it could be used for.
Right.
On revenue generating facilities.
Switch.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Suckers.
So as I mentioned, so in addition to the new ongoing growth revenue derived from the developments in Lakeview, these developers will also be paying their off site levies, which will be reimbursed to the city. So council has, has the ability to choose how to apply those reimbursed funds. So assuming projects associated with the offset levy were funded by debt. Council could choose to apply these dollars to offset the tax rate. So that, so that our existing taxpayers, even though we're debt financing for an offset levy project, similar to how we're, we're doing now. I bring money in from the reserve to fund project nine, for example, so that the residents, so you can do that. Or the other option. Oh, and I said that would be a good. That would be a good option if there was limited future projects that will require debt or where inflationary impacts of the regular budget make additional impacts of debt difficult to absorb. I would say we're kind of in that situation right now. Another option would be to leave those dollars in the off site levy recovery fund in order to fund future projects. Without taking on debt, so similar to kind of what we just talked about. And I said that would be a good option when there's lots of future infrastructure to build that would work for the financing. And especially if we're in a rising interest rate environment, right? You're better off to. Have more cash to pay those future projects and not have to take on that new debt. So the funny thing is, we're kind of in that situation as well. And so the reality is the correct answer is probably somewhere in the middle, right? And it's probably a balance between those two strategies of whether you collect that money back, do you. Offset the taxes or do you save it for future so you don't have to take on more debt in the future?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's probably a balance somewhere in the middle, so something to think about. We're at the end. So some of the examples and options provided today, really, they were just top of mind potential kind of opportunities. If council sees the need and the support of developing a long term debt strategy. It's recommended that administration kind of do a robust municipal scan. You know, I have good connections with all my provincial finance colleagues to understand the range of strategies that are already being employed, you know, across the province. Want to work collaboratively collaboratively with executive leadership and leadership team to develop options, including that risk identification with all those options. Provide recommendations to council and then eventually we'll have to rewrite all the policies that touch debt and reserves and and based on council's direction. So I'd envision this happening kind of over time with some various touch points with council as we move through the process. Some of the touch points may be for discussion and feedback and others will probably be for recommending approval of changes. And yeah, that's kind of. Great, so thanks for staying awake.
You got everything you need from us?
I think so.
All right, all right. Is there any wild ideas that Diane didn't present that you guys might have?
Growing to 100,000.
Becoming our own financing, like a lot of money we can lend it out to other people. What?
No, I know, I don't know, I mean, I, I. You know, you. You have to have the policies around that, you have to, and you have to look to see how we can. And then, and you know, how, how are they keep keeping relevant in relation to whatever, so no?
Policy right now, we have a lot of reserves for life cycle.
Yeah.
And we get interest on it. And then interest just goes straight to offset taxes, is that correct?
Well, so we have, um, so we have our reserves that are interest bearing, so those, so those reserves, and that's identified right in the. Policy which ones get interest, so we actually apply interest against those reserves. And then there's a portion of it that goes directly against the taxes.
So maybe that, maybe that's something else, it's the stuff that's offsetting taxes currently, maybe we could portion it off to bigger reserves. I don't know, because it seems to be significant dollars and, right?
Yeah.
I mean, the utility ones just add to the tools we actually have to collect next, less the next year, right?
Yeah, so the utility finances are very separate from. Interest that those reserves are earning state within the utility model.
Right.
To help offset future rates.
Right, yeah, okay. Council Hughes.
Yeah, the only, I'm trying to just wrap my head around all this, Diane. The only thing is that we just finished talking about how we want to have it, like not have all the taxpayers pay for it now for an amended later. And then this is basically doing the opposite of that. In that we're now increasing the taxes now, because if we're not applying those money to the taxes to save a tax decrease later. We're, we're increasing the taxes now, putting a heavier burden on people now, when we know we have tax increases coming. That are quite substantial. And then elevating them further than we needed to so that we can decrease it later, so we won't have debt for generational. So I'm just trying to come to terms this in my head because we just finished hearing about how we don't want, we want to allow it generational to pay for it. And now we're doing the opposite by increasing the taxes so that we can decrease it later with a potential. So it's like we're increasing it now and then potentially there will be a usage for it to decrease it later. Well, I guess you can decrease it later, but it's. We're penalizing people now for later, that's the thing I'm trying to wrap my head around right now. And I think that when I was hearing Shelley when she was asking about the debt thing, I'm thinking like, yes, we're taking 2 million dollars to put towards. Operating, but at the same time, that's 2 million dollars that we could have had towards debt, which would have been basically a 20 million dollar debt. That we're now offsetting to do later on operational, like when I look at your numbers. So another hypothetical number is best of the point, the point is that, you know, like those are, that is money that we could have had an immediate. Build on now for 20 million dollars worth of debt that we're not doing. Because we're, we're doing that to decrease it later. So it sounds wonderful, but when you think about all the real impacts, it's opposite of what we've been discussing. And we're basically saying, well, raise your taxes now by just not decreasing as much as we could have. So that way we can build it later and you won't feel this bad, it's still the same principles before.
Yeah, I do, I mean, I agree with your comments in some ways, like the interesting thing is like on that last slide when I was talking about the reimbursements coming back from the levies. The problem is we're in both situations, so again, you'd probably want to apply those dollars coming back against the taxes. In a case, well. In the major case where the regular budget makes additional impacts of debt difficult to absorb. And I, and I fully recognize that that's the situation right now, I mean, that's what we're forecasting the next couple of years. So that's a perfect reason to put that, those reimbursements back against the taxes. But like I said, then on the other side, you've got lots of future projects and you're in a rising interest rate environment, which means if you then have to take out a bigger debt. Later on and you're paying way higher interest, that could be a worse impact. So that's, so that's where I feel like there probably needs to be kind of a balance somewhere in the middle. But I, yeah, no, what you're saying is is totally.
Could you, instead of taking the 2 million year one and then three point eight the next year, whatever your. Your illustration was, instead of having it into reserve. So when we need to build a rec center, we have 37,000 cash, 37,000 cash, could you take maybe half of that to the reserve and half of it to service a debt? Have it a debt servicing reserve?
But are you, what, what debt are you talking about from the off, from the front ending of the, of the entire?
No, like a rec center or.
But we wouldn't be taking on the debt until we are actually building a rec center.
Something else, there's the Millennium Park, something like that, stuff that we want to do now.
Just general, our general debt.
Growth servicing the debt and that gives that intergenerational fairness, like you could do it at different ratios. Some of it could service today's debt, some of this could be saving up to avoid future debt.
And and there's, I think there's a couple of ways you can do that mathematically, like I said, if you didn't, if you didn't protect 100% of the new assessment growth from Lakeview and you did, say, say 75%. So let's, let's try and do some, I'll try and do, using now for my head. So say you have 2 million dollars in new assessment growth coming out of Lakeview, we set the parameter at 75%. So that means I have 500,000, that's going to go against kind of the general assessment growth. Our policy today would say 25% of that automatically gets applied against the current taxpayer, which is offsetting. And so whether the, the right number is, I'm probably getting this, the sense council probably, probably wouldn't approve of 100% of new, new step coming out of Lakeview. So it's probably a number somewhere between 50 and 100 is what I'm kind of guessing. Which would automatically just through, even through our existing processes and policies, automatically give more money back to the existing taxpayer. That might be an easier way to do it. But again, I think there's lots of options.
Yeah.
But we kind of need to think through what makes the most sense and and it's fair to everybody, right? And because that's the whole piece, is you want to be. Fair to your existing residents and make sure you're, you're preparing for those future ones as well. Because like I said, my concern to be, you get six years down the road and now you need to build your 50 million dollar rec center and interest rates have doubled. So have you, you know. It's always, I mean, part of it is around tax stability too, is always, is what I think as well, like I understand. And you know, I've heard that argument before, like if the money, if you can charge them less now. Charge less now, but then you're going to have, when you have to do something, then you have a huge tax increase, rather than just doing kind of more, more stabilizing it along by, by using some of these reserves and some of these strategies. And there's great arguments on both sides, right?
Yeah.
Like I think Kathy, that what you mentioned about offsetting the debt, using that money makes a bit more sense. Because the challenge you have is, okay, you build it up over five years, let's just use all your numbers at face value just for arguments like, okay Diane. And then you have 37 million, then you, then you spend it all and then you have to wait again to rebuild it.
Yeah.
Whereas like, if you look at like Apple, they have 900 billion dollars, but they don't. Use the 900 billion dollars, what they actually do is then they get a loan for 900 billion dollars and use the loan money while keeping the capital. To allow that to do something for them, so. You know, I'm looking at your, the operating and we're like, it'll just offset operating, but you could actually use it to offset the debt as you, so you say. Like you know how I said, well, why we, we can do the 2 million dollars would be 20 million, 2 million in revenue, 20 million dollars in capital. But what you actually have then is if you were to do that, you'd have a 20 million dollar loan you could take out. So if it grew at the rate that you're saying, and I know this is just hypothetical, but then really you could afford to pay for the debt. Of the rec center within two to three years in its entirety by saying we have now the operating costs to, or the operating capital. To pay to surface that debt within two to three years. And meanwhile, you still have accumulated that capital that you could put towards anything, including decreasing the amount that we require or the RMR. Because we have that one time increases or whatever we require. So it may not be that we want to use it for operating. For deficits strictly as operating, but also recognize decrease the, use that operating to decrease the amount of debt, as Kathy had said. And that is what major businesses that use debt wisely do. Is that you think get the capital to actually, and then they take debt against their own capital, so. That, I know that you're exploring it, but I just wanted to bring that up, that that may be something that we don't look at it strictly, just build and just operating. Just build and just operating, but rather use that money to decrease the debt and allow that debt to then allow. Because you've said before, we don't have the cash for this, like all the money that we want to build, et cetera. We don't have the cash. But it, you do have it if you allow the debt and the operating of it to, to service it. You would have a much greater range to work with. So I think you understand I'm saying. Um, and so.
Bigger businesses certainly work on, on like a debt to equity type financing model. It's, that's not something municipalities typically have been comfortable with, but it's, it's, it's good, certainly good business practice. I think that, I think part of what I was trying to, trying to challenge is, is, you know, council broadhead has said, you know, people are, are nervous about debt, right? So this was just one way of, if you could reduce the amount of debt you had to take out and pay cash for some things. You know, would that help alleviate and help people feel more comfortable? But there's certainly lots of different methods. Because yeah, I'm just basically saying, even when you get to that time, you've got all this, this money in the reserve, use it to fund the debt. Like still borrow for the, for the rec center and use that money to fund the debt. So it's still a lot of costing taxpayers anything. This is differently final.
Yeah, like use the operating money for the debt. And then you could still use the capital for whatever else you wanted. And you could use that earlier because it's still the operating that's what's going to be concupulating so quickly. Um.
Right. I mean, the challenge is though, with our debt limits though, right? Like that's, that's part of the challenge is we have so many projects we want to do, like we can't actually do them all because it will be above our debt.
Right.
Right? And so we have to figure out how we can, other things without doing debt or spread them out or, you know, some of that strategy. So it might be just a few things that we, we do have a way to pay cash for because we can't take out more debt.
That's a two-headed monster, really.
Yeah.
It's like the debt limit and then the tax tolerance.
Yeah.
I would just say don't limit it to thinking it had the, the capital. And that we can actually figure out this other strategy to have a handle operating debt costs as well or ongoing or new debt costs that we have. So that way we could actually do it both ways. I know we have that limit, but you know, if we have that flexibility, that's all.
And that's basically exactly how the offset living recovery fund works, right? Like we use that money coming in there to offset the debt payments on the projects that we've approved. So it's the exact same concept, right? All right, well.
Good conversation, guys. Anything else?
My head hurts.
That hurts. Well, when this first, my head hurt, obviously. Oh my God. Isn't it financial acumen to figure it out? All right. Are we adjourned?
A few.
We're adjourned.
Thanks, everybody. It was a great meeting.
Hi, Wes.
Yeah, thanks Diane for a great presentation and, uh, I'm glad we're not investing in Bitcoin.